I would like to call this regular meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order, please. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bertani?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tim?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Here.
And Mayor Price.
We have a quorum. And the invocation this evening will be led by Worship Pastor Jeff Hood, First Baptist Church. Pastor, if you would, sir.
Let's pray again. Lord, I thank you for this body, and I thank you for the responsibility that you have given to them. Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom as they look through... Look through issues and try to make decisions. I pray that tonight would be an evening where what needs to be done will be done. Lord, I thank you for our city. I thank you for people who want it to be the best that it can be. And my prayer is that you will guide us in doing just that, so that we can solve some problems, so that we can make things better, so that people can flourish in living in Fairfield. Thank you for what you do, and I pray that your will would be done tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And Mr. Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag, please?
Please repeat after me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do get to council reports, given the number of people who are here this evening, I will be forced to reduce the speaking time from three minutes to two minutes, please. So make your comments as succinct as you can. We'll begin with council reports, please. Housewoman Panduro, would you like to begin, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see a full house. Welcome to the council meeting this evening. And I just have a quick, a couple of... There was a lot of events that happened this weekend with regards to Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead. And I wanted just to congratulate and good job to the Parks and Rec Department. They did a grand... I don't know if anybody here attended, or I know some of my colleagues may have attended the event. But it was a lovely event with a lot of celebration of life. It's not a scary event. It's a Latin culture event where we celebrate life and our past loved ones, and we honor them. And so it was a lovely day to be able to do that with community and our community partners. And so I want to thank all those that were there in attendance, who volunteered, who made that day happen. That same evening, the Matt Garcia Foundation had an event downtown. And a lot of families and kids came out and did some trick-or-treating with all the vendors downtown. And they had a movie night over on the lawn, which was really lovely to see families out enjoying our downtown area. And then lastly, Grande Circle. I know I bring this up a lot. This neighborhood is one that we are trying to bring some positive things to. And on Sunday evening, we held a trunk or treat along with Liberty Church and Fairfield PD and some of our community partners. So thank you to Fairfield PD also again, and then the fire department was also present. So thank you again for, you know, to everyone that made this weekend a great weekend for families to be out enjoying their community. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Tonison, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I was with Doris at the Day of the Dead, and there was some scary outfits. I just wanted to talk about, we had a trick-or-treat downtown. And it was put on by the Matt Garcia Foundation and the downtown businesses. We ended up with, they said 350 to 400 kids, but it was a great event and growing. After that, we had movie night. So it was a fantastic event and hope to continue that. And that's all for me tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, quickly, thank you for the emails. Obviously, you know that we've had a ton of emails. Unfortunately, a lot of them we got probably within the last two hours. And we've been meeting in closed session. But I anticipate and look forward to a rousing discussion tonight. Mayor, thank you, sir.
You, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things briefly. First, last night, the mayor and Councilman Scotto Tonison and our staff and city manager had a... It's a video meeting is what it was with our sister city representatives in Japan. And 50 years we've been doing this. And it's been a great success. We've had some of our students go there, and some of their students come here. You've seen them here over the years in our council chamber. And I liked what several people had to say, and that is, the more that we know about each other, it's more likely that we maintain peace and understanding. And I'm so proud that this city and that city has continued and strengthened our relationship through doing that. Of course, COVID has slowed things down, which is why we were on the video last night. But it was really quite wonderful. And they put together a really, really nice magazine, which they'll be sending here. And it's written in English and in Japanese with beautiful photos and just commemorating our great relationship. So it's just something that's very special and something that we'll hear more about in just a little bit. The second thing is, is that I and some of my fellow graduates from Fairfield High School in '79 get together every year, and we gather and buy blankets and sleeping bags for our homeless. And so I'm asking if anybody has any very gently-used and clean blankets or also sleeping bags, if you could just contact me and I'll come pick them up. We're going to deliver them on Saturday. We get together for a nice little brunch at Joe's Buffet and then take all of these things over to one of our churches, City Church, who uses them and needs them badly. So you can call me at 707-639-0500, or you can just go online and see my connections there to get it to me, and I will do that. I appreciate everybody who's helped us in the past. It's been really successful, so thank you very, very much. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. I'm looking forward to hearing from you, so I'm going to keep my comments very brief. Anyone who has ever worked with me knows that I come to these meetings with an open mind. So I'm looking forward to your comments. I just want to shout out to the Fairfield Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield CAN. I really want to commend this group. It's a collaboration of City Hall, our police department, thank you, Chief Cantrell, our fire department, and the senior pastors of churches in Solano County, more specifically in Fairfield. We've been meeting now for several months, and we have decided our path forward, at least in the short term. We will be out on Travis Air Force Base in late January of '22 to honor our troops in a way that really matters to them. I've said this before, but we've been informed by the chaplain out there that our heroes really go into battle. And that might seem hard to us, but that's the easy part for them. The tough part is coming home and coming home well and knowing that this community embraces them. So we are opening dialogue out at Travis Air Force Base facilitated by the chaplain. And our senior pastors are looking forward to getting to know our troops in a meaningful way. So I'll have more with you on that as that date approaches. And we will also be holding our next Fairfield Clergy Action Network meeting at the PAL Center, because that's part two of our strategy for engaging this community. We're going to have our senior pastors go out to PAL, and that is on Tuesday, November 30th, that close to Thanksgiving, but we're going to do it anyway. We're going to go out to PAL and make the connection between the work that's going on at PAL and our faith community here in the city of Fairfield. So that's my quick update, and I look forward to your comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great to see everybody out here tonight. I just wanted to give just a brief report on our two-by-two committee on homelessness, which is county-wide that myself and Councilwoman Panduro sit on. Our working group met last week, and we continue to work towards a county-wide commission with other cities, Vacaville, hopefully Benicia, Vallejos join, and also Solano County. So we're excited about that, and I think we meet with our two-by-two committee in a couple of weeks. And that's made up of the elected officials from those cities. And like I'd said many times, this is the first time that our cities have worked collectively together to take on the homelessness issue in our county. So we're, you know, we're pretty excited. The last thing I want to say is, November 16th, we're going to do a proclamation, United Against Hate. We're joining other cities in the Bay Area doing this. And I was contacted, I want to say, a few months ago regarding this by the mayor of Berkeley. And I think that we, you know, we decided as Fairfield that we stand united against hate. So on November 16th, we're going to be reading that proclamation. So if you're not here, please look on and watch on TV. Thanks.
Thank you. And I should like to report very quickly that I too received a number of emails and significant telephone conversations. So thank you very much. Would also like to remind all of us who live in Solano County that the Library Foundation does its annual Authors Luncheon next Sunday over at Rancho Solano. If you have an opportunity, please join us. And then the really outstanding news is that we'll have our annual Veterans Day parade, and we will have another flyby. So put that on your calendar for the 11th. And we met in closed session, but there was no reportable action. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, this morning, we made an announcement at the fire department. We have announced the appointment of the new fire chief with the retirement of Chief Tony Velasquez by the end of this year. His last day with us will be December 30th. And we're grateful to Tony for his many years of service. He served as fire chief for almost nine years and has done a tremendous job. And he announced to me several months ago his intentions to retire at the end of this year. So we did announce who will be his replacement, and he's sitting here, so maybe he can stand up. Deputy Chief Matt Lukinbach has been appointed the next fire chief. And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I just have a brief comment. We put some of these out in the lobby, and this is so all of you can follow us on our website. If you don't do so already, you can subscribe, so anytime there's a change made, you'll be notified. And we're working on a brand-new website, and it should be released probably in December. So look for that. And then also, we have lots of ways of staying connected through social media, so you can grab one of these. There's even a QR code you can scan. So... And then I'm just looking forward to seeing Arleta Courtright recognized, rightly so. Thank you.
We'll turn now to presentations, please. Madam Clerk, if you would.
Presentation one, proclamation declaring November 1st as Extra Mile Day. And our presenter is Councilmember Tonison. Thank you.
From here, I want to go up there. Thank you. Office of the Mayor of Fairfield, proclamation Extra Mile Day, November 1, 2021. Whereas Fairfield, California is a community which acknowledges a special vibrancy exists within the community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile to volunteer and provide service. And whereas Fairfield, California is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving themselves wholeheartedly, without total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. Whereas Fairfield, California is a community which chooses to shine a light and celebrate individuals, organizations within the community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. Whereas Fairfield, California acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 575 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day. Now therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of Fairfield, California, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2021 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individuals in the community to take time on this day, not to only go the extra mile, but to also acknowledge all of those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make the organizations, families, communities, countries, and our world a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. And our second presentation is proclamation declaring November 2nd as Arleta Courtright Day. And our presenter... And our presenter is Councilmember Doris Panduro.
And Ms. Courtright, would you mind coming up here with me, please? Thank you. Okay, so, "From the office of the Mayor of Fairfield, California, proclaiming Arleta Courtright Day as November 2, 2021. Whereas, Arleta Courtright has been the chair of the Fairfield-Narasaki Sister Program since 2003, planning the travel arrangements for a group of six to eight Narasaki Sister participants, preparing an itinerary for the Narasaki students and chaff bronns, finding volunteer housing hosts, gathering welcome baskets, and more. And whereas, the Narasaki delegation is hosted for three weeks during Christmas and New Year's with visits to local businesses, schools, and tourist attractions. The scheduling and planning of hosting the students and preparing Fairfield residents to travel to Japan is a one-year planning process. And whereas, Arleta and Jean Courtright have hosted the yearly Sister City trip to Monterey, organizing the itinerary, booking lodging, aquarium tour, hikes, and restaurants. And whereas, Arleta Courtright is one of the founding members of the Solano County Women's History Month Luncheon, which has been held during Women's History Month in March of each year. The annual luncheon raises funds for the Solano County Library Foundation and helps fund books and programs for Solano County libraries. And whereas, Arleta is a current member of Seroptimus International of Central Solano County and served as its president twice, from 2005 through 2006 and 2013 through 2014. Her theme was Plant Kindness, Gather Love. And she has also served as chair for numerous committees throughout the years. And whereas, Arleta faithfully served local Girl Scouts as troop leader, service unit coordinator, camp director, board of director, and now serves on the Girl Scouts of Northern California Property Committee. And whereas, Arleta has served on the Executive Board of the United Methodist Women. And whereas, Arleta dependently served as the elected Fairfield City Clerk for eight years, from November 2003 through 2011. Now therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim that November 2, 2021, as Arleta Courtright Day in the city of Fairfield, and ask you to join me in congratulating her on this achievement and thank her for her dedication and commitment to the city of Fairfield and the entire community."
And many thanks to Jean Courtright as well, because he has, he has been a loyal volunteer all these many years as well.
I just wanted to say, I couldn't, couldn't have done it without the other volunteers in the program and the support of all the other people who have been involved for so many years, but especially the assistance of my, my dear husband and my daughter, who is now in Japan, but still translates things for us and does what she can. So, thank you all so much.
And our third presentation is the Measure P Oversight Committee Annual Report, which will be given by the Chair of the Committee, Chris Matthews.
Mayor Price, City Council Members, senior staff, and to my neighbors and fellow citizens of Fairfield, my name's Chris Matthews. I'm a member of the Measure P Committee, and just by brief context, Measure, is this on? Yeah. Measure P was passed back in 2012. It's a 1% transaction fee, sales tax, that produces almost $20 million a year. At that time, it passed and then was extended in 2016 by almost 70% of the citizens of Fairfield, the voters. So, it enjoys great support, and it represents about 18% of the city general fund. And what I'd like to do, we detailed a 10-page report about activities in the last year and want to recognize Clerk Reese and Vice Chair Steve Vancill for their many efforts in putting together that report. I know that you have a very full agenda tonight, and so I'll just briefly highlight a few programs that would not be possible were it not for the Measure P funds. Again, these funds come into the general account and are not then subject to any kind of state or county oversight, which is a very significant factor. In the police area, one of the things that it's enabled is the creation of the homeless intervention team, HIT, and that's now been expanded to five members, and really significantly, it also includes community service officers and long-term advisors on various programs that are available to the homeless. One of the other things that has happened in the last year are the addition of over 38 high-tech cameras that have had significant progress in reducing various crimes in the area. In 2020, crime was down 18%, and as a result of these cameras, there were actually two murder arrests that were made and several vehicles that recovered and other crimes that were solved. Another innovative example of a program that was funded in part by Measure P is the Neighborhood Court, and this is a very unique and progressive program that allows for misdemeanors to be solved at the neighborhood level. Cases are reviewed by the police and then passed on to the advisory group that helps support those, and this is especially impactful on youth because, as a result, pardon me, of this, if they follow through with the various commitments, there's no record that's kept, and it stays out of the legal court system. PAL was brought up earlier, and that's a program that has been also of great benefit to the youth, and many significant activities were funded as part of that. We were just hearing about new leadership at the fire department. The fire department responds to over 38 calls daily, and in 2020, there were a total of over 661 fires. That's an increase of 57% in the past five years. So, it needs additional funding, and part of what US City Council have done is approved a new fire station on Business Center Drive, which will be developed over the coming years. It's also significant to note that because of the activity of the fire department, the insurance rating level has been reduced from three to two. One is the absolute best, but as a result of that, our homeowner policies should be seeing a reduction in costs in the coming years. Most importantly, you see signs around that talk about street work that has been funded. There's been almost 29 million square feet of additional paving, 600 potholes, and more to come in the future. One of the things that goes hard, in hand with the HIT program is a HART program, which is run through the Public Service Committee, and as a result of efforts there, there have been over 570 individuals that were contacted, and 72 of them received case management, and there were over 200 camps that were cleaned up as a result of this. I want to close by thanking not only the senior staff members that have been of great support, and in particular, we're going to miss Emily Combs as she moves on to additional opportunities for her, and I want to recognize Tim Tomko, Stephen Vancill, Eddie Ramirez is traveling, but Tara Lee Martin as the other committee members. And we thank you for this opportunity to work together and make sure that those funds are spent in the most appropriate way.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Matthews, and your committee. It's very remarkable how our taxpayers, when the time was urgent and the need was very desperate, that we were able to pass Measure P. So, thank you very much, and your committee.
Thank you.
We're a fortunate community, sir. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we turn now to process for public comments, and for those of you who came in after we began the meeting, public comments are limited this evening to two minutes each, please. So, thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public. Ask for clarification from staff. Refer the matter to staff. Request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me at the latest prior to the time for public comment on that item. And for those at home, if you're joining via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press star nine on your phone to request to speak. And as the mayor says, tonight's speakers are limited to two minutes per item. And I'll call the first public comment speaker, Jeff Traeger.
And just a reminder, speakers should not discuss any topic that isn't on the agenda this evening, so thank you very much. Jeffrey, welcome back, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, as clarification, this time is for items that are not on the agenda. If you're wanting to speak on an item on the agenda, you'll want to wait until that item comes up. So, this is if it's not on the agenda, you speak during this time.
Thank you.
On the, this Thursday night, we have Brian Owens, and if you guys are familiar with the soul sing, soul sounds of Sam Cooke and Marvin Gaye, this is, this is what this guy sounds like. And so, this Thursday night at 8:00, we have Brian Jones and, uh, Brian Owens. We have, the Missouri Street Theater has three events this, this month, Madagascar, Altogether, and Matilda on the 14th of November. And on a, on a personal note, I lost a good friend this week, a guy named Herbie Herbert, and I mention his name because Herbie managed Journey, and when I needed someone to come up and perform for the Crystal Middle Schools fundraiser, one of them, he got on the phone and he gave me Jonathan Kane, who was the keyboardist, and I don't know if you're not familiar with Jonathan. Jonathan wrote the song that ended the Sopranos run. Anyway, he came up and he sang some Journey songs, and it was, it was fabulous. So, I, I want to hats off to a wonderful human being. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
And our next speaker is Leslie Batson. Sixteen, thank you.
Well, what I was hoping to say has been co-opted already. Your new digs are lovely, and I just wanted to point out that probably the people that are here tonight are not here to see them. They're here to speak, and I was hoping to appeal to the goodwill of the mayor that whatever agenda item people wanted to speak to tonight, they would be afforded a full three minutes. Important things are happening in the community, and this is an outpouring that you haven't seen for many, many months, and I would think that you'd want to give people their fair due. Thank you.
And our last public comment speaker is, he wants to be anonymous, Good Citizen. Are you here?
That's aspiring good citizen, everybody, and I tip my hat to everybody here, but I would like to remain anonymous. Part of my incognito. I'd like to thank a couple of people that work for our fire department over here, and I'm not going to say this name, as pretty as it is, so bear with me. It's Angela Lee Duhousey. She's the secretary at the Fire Hall. Very good people. And then the other fire captain is Andrew Cranston. Very professional. We need more people like that. And I know, kind of, got to keep it brief, but I'd like to bring to the attention of this council the incident of Police Officer Williams and at the laundromat, how, I seen it on YouTube where he, one of our officers totally violated this man's rights, and it's all captured on camera. You can see it. So, I'm here to commend the good. We need more like that, but I don't think we want a man like Mr. Williams on our payroll for doing that. So, that's your decision. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention and thank everybody. And thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you. That's all for, as far as speaker cards. Is there anyone else that wanted to just speak on public comment, not on a particular item? And then also, Brian, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on public comment?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are no people on Zoom wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So, our next item, the consent calendar, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. I do not have any speaker cards.
Have a motion. The Vice Mayor is our second, please. Councilwoman Bertani, thank you. Roll call.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry, who made the first and the second on that? Rick and Pam. Okay, thank you. And Brian, were there any people that wanted to speak on the consent calendar on Zoom?
We have no people on Zoom at this time wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move to new business. Item 13, Resolution 2021-266 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for the City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2016-1, Villages at Fairfield, with respect to improvement Area C and approving related documents and actions. And our presenter is our Finance Director, Emily Combs.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. So, the project we're discussing tonight is Villages at Fairfield. So, on December 6, 2016, council completed the proceedings to establish Community Facilities District 2016-1, or Villages at Fairfield, and authorized the levy of special taxes in the various improvement areas. Since that time, the city has issued special tax bonds payable from special taxes in Improvement Area A and in Improvement Area B. We've now reached the next anticipated phase in the project, which requires council's authorization to issue bonds to help fund the necessary infrastructure for Area C, which encompasses 103 acres that is entitled for 390 single-family units, four-and-a-half-acre commercial center, parks, and open space. So, based on current market conditions, the bonds are estimated to be issued at around $22.8 million, and based on recent appraisal of Area C, the property is valued at about $124 million. The debt service on these bonds is payable from special taxes levied annually on taxable properties having no impact on the general fund. The financing is expected to price later this month and close in early December. So, that concludes my presentation for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions, colleagues? Entertainer motion then to approve. It was moved by Councilwoman Moy and seconded by Councilmember Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
And just to make sure, Brian, we didn't have anyone on Zoom, did we, that wanted to speak on item 13? I don't have any cards.
And, yeah, we have no speakers at this time, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 14, Discussion and Direction Regarding Rehabilitation Options for the Tennis Courts at Allenwood Community Park. And our presenter is Ryan Pangeneben, our Assistant Public Works Director.
So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Ryan Pangeneben, and I'm the Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer. At the September 7th Thank you. At the September 7th council meeting, council asked staff to explore opportunities to renovate the existing tennis courts at Allenwood. Staff has conducted an onsite assessment, researched similar tennis court rehabilitation projects, and contacted other local agencies and specialty contractors to gather recommendations and related estimated costs. So, based on this feedback, we've prepared a few options for consideration and are seeking council direction. So, this slide, it may look familiar to some as it represents the council adopted 2018 master plan for the renovation at Allenwood Community Park. The master plan, it provides a roadmap for the overall design and phasing of improvements at the park. The master plan identified a funding plan or strategy for the conceptual planning, design, and construction of Phases 1 through 3, which, as council is aware, is the skate park is the construction of a new dog park and a new accessible play area, which is going to be scheduled for construction in 2022. So, you'll notice that the renovation of the tennis courts are shown here in purple in Phase 7 and is currently in an unfunded phase. So, for context, the existing tennis courts, or eight tennis courts are shown here in red and were constructed in the late '70s. And while the location of the existing courts, it conflicts with the current layout of the master plan, it's not beyond a realm of possibilities to do a redesign of some of the transportation and circulation elements included within Phase 4. So, staff recently completed an assessment of the tennis courts, and the nets are in good standard, so the focus of our discussion tonight is So the focus of our discussion tonight is on the playing surface. So for the first option here, we're intending to target the most distressed and failing sections of the playing court and repairing those with new asphalt. We would next fill in the cracks and then later provide a new resurfacing of the entire court. That resurfacing would be a cement, sand, emulsion, leveling course. So this work is anticipated to be pretty labor-intensive with construction, as you could see here on the slide, being completed mostly by hand. Also, through staff's research, we, um, we noticed that this is somewhat specialized in nature. So there's a very limited pool of contractors that we were able to find to perform. So while we were unable to find an actual quote from a contractor or a recently completed bid, um, the hundred fifty-six thousand dollars that we estimate for the construction cost estimate is just a rough order magnitude, and we don't have a great level of confidence in that number. So if we select this option, staff would report back if there's any change or decrease or increase in price. And we estimate this resurfacing will prolong the life of the playing surface another three to five years. The second option consists of a more robust treatment to the existing playing surface. And in this scenario, the work entails removing the top three inches, three to five inches of the existing playing surface and providing a new asphalt over the entire courts. Repaving the entire playing, uh, playing area, it would address water ponding issues, structural deficiencies. So we expect this to extend the life of the tennis courts fifteen to twenty years. And as we've analyzed this option, the high estimated construction costs are based on actual bids that we were able to receive from local agencies. And we can attribute that higher cost maybe to, uh, smaller scale projects and potential loss of efficiencies from the contractor's inability to access the site with large excavation and paving equipment. So as we've looked at both of these options, we think it's worth noting that we would take the opportunity to re-stripe a court or maybe two courts so that they'd be able to be utilized by both pickleball and tennis court, uh, tennis players. So pending council's direction tonight, staff recommends coordinating with our finance department and coming up with a, a funding strategy to take a closer look at our available revenue sources, not only for the design and construction of the improvements, but also to ensure the ongoing maintenance and is accounted for. And finally, we'd look to program the work into our five-year capital improvement program, um, which we recommend entails engaging with a landscape architect to prepare the plans, specifications, and cost estimates for bidding. So that concludes my, uh, presentation. And this final slide is a side-by-side comparison of the various options. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time. And again, um, we're seeking feedback on the preferred approach towards implementation. Thank you.
Councilman Tonison, you want to lead off, please?
Yeah, I'll, uh, are there speakers? If we could listen to the speakers first, and then I do have a few questions.
Okay, I have two, um, and then I'll check on if there are any on Zoom. Valerie Minor is the first one.
My name is Valerie Minor. And, um, so the first experience, I'm here to talk about pickleball and how much I love the sport. And I just started playing in January, and it has changed my life. I live, breathe, and talk about pickleball. Everybody at work is tired of hearing me talk about pickleball. What's pickleball? What's pickleball? Look it up, check it up, uh, on YouTube. I am a, um, what is that, a recovering tennis player in pickleball. So I love it. It's a fabulous sport. And one of the things I love about it, many of the things I love about it, is very social. It's very inclusive. It, all, to all people can play. It's, uh, the spirit of rotation. It's very positive. Uh, there's a learning spirit where you help others and you work together and you rotate partners. And I just feel that, um, having permanent pickleball courts would be so wonderful because you could go play whenever you wanted. You wouldn't have to worry about taping the court or having to, um, as timers make me look, or having to, uh, you know, find someone who has a net, a pickleball net. So I'm a sixth grade teacher at David Weir Preparatory Academy. I love my job. And the kids know when I'm playing pickleball on Tuesday nights, I show my paddle. And so they're like, what's pickleball? So I have started a pickleball club at David Weir. And those kids, yay, I loved, those kids need a place to play. They need a place to go and play. And, um, so I, uh, my pickleball group donated some paddles. And also, teachers have donated toys, a net, so I have a net. I have some paddles. I have a second net on the way. And I just can't tell you how fabulous this sport is. It's not snobby. It's very welcoming. It could, and it's not just for every older people, it's for everyone. And we need to get our youth involved in an inexpensive sport. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker on item fourteen is George Kennedy.
So I'm here tonight, um, with three different positions, so I guess I get six minutes. No. Um, so first, I'm as, I'm here as a resident of the City of Fairfield, like you all know. Second, I'm part of Solano Pickleball Club, of which Valerie plays with us. Third, I'm the official ambassador for this area for the United States Pickleball Association. Um, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport several years now, several years in a row now. Twenty twenty had an over twenty-one percent increase in play throughout the United States alone. They're televising major tournaments on Tennis Channel, as well as live streaming of most tournaments. There is a professional circuit as well. It is a game for all ages. A recent national event in Florida had the youngest player being nine years old and the oldest player being ninety-one. That's pretty amazing. Our group regularly has a range that goes from eight to eighty that play together in games. I would like to suggest that the council, that we recommend option number one is the best alternative and that pickleball be an integral part of the refurbishment of the Allen Witt Courts. It is the best interest of the city that this is done. If taken care of properly, additional life expectancies can be achieved. We would like to see half the courts designated for tennis and the other half for pickleball. This could create twelve to sixteen pickleball courts. This would also create a venue like no other from Concord to Citrus Heights here in our wine country, a perfect destination for pickleball. Citrus Heights has over seven hundred members. Santa Rosa has over a thousand members. It started with four people. Discovery Bay has hundreds as well. All these clubs have great working partnerships with their respective cities, uh, sharing maintenance, et cetera.
George, would you conclude, please?
Yep. We would like to have, um, a use agreement similar to what other leagues have in town from a maintenance point, and we would take care of that. We do not, um, we do that now in Vacaville without an agreement. The courts that you have, uh, would, we would have, uh, be able to have larger tournaments. I would like to mainly thank the city and the staff to get to this point. We've had many productive conversations and meetings on this. And check Vanity Fair, uh, there's a huge article about how it goes from Leonardo DiCaprio to your grandparents that play pickleball now.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. I have one more speaker, um, Valerie Engelbreit, on item fourteen. Oh, and one more after that.
I just wanted to thank everybody for, well, putting this on the agenda tonight. So probably about three or four months ago, my dad's friends called me up and said, hey, our group that plays every Tuesday and Thursday mornings at Allen Witt is starting to dwindle, and we kind of need another player. Can you come out? And I'm like, sure, I can come out and kind of check this out. So I got out there and kind of saw the courts and, and me with all the girls, we started playing. And I kind of thought, gosh, you know, this really needs a little bit of hand up, a little help. And so luckily, Mr. Price and Mr. Tonison came out, took a look at the courts, and saw the need, and saw the girls coming and, uh, participating, playing. And I really want to thank you guys for coming out. I do want to say that when the girls get out there on the courts every Tuesday and Thursday, that they clean the courts. They take a sweep of all the courts, get the debris picked up and thrown away. So I want to thank you guys tonight for putting this on the agenda.
And Valerie, what's the average age?
Yeah.
We know the answer, it's eighty.
Okay, and our next speaker on item fourteen, Connie, is it McKenna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Um, I'm a new resident to Fairfield, and I, um, it was a little disappointing when I went to the court, went to the tennis courts. But I play with a great group of ladies. And yes, you know, the average age is eighty, but as you can see, I'm not. But, um, I just love this group of ladies that I play with. And, um, I just, you know, I think it's a great way for me to have met people in this community. And, um, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Did anyone else want to speak on item fourteen? Oh, okay. Marilyn?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to put in a pitch for the tennis players. Don't forget the tennis players. Tennis is, uh, struggling right now in Fairfield because In Shape has converted many of their courts. And so there's no place to play league play anymore. And league play takes, uh, as many as five courts for, uh, just, um, a routine, uh, competition. You know, we have a season. And I would encourage you to have at least five courts where tennis can be played and league play can occur, because otherwise it can't happen anymore in Fairfield. And it was a very vibrant, uh, uh, series of competitions in past years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item fourteen? Um, Brian, do we have anyone on Zoom for this item?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have one person via Zoom, and I'll go ahead and bring him in.
Thank you.
We have Brian Kilpatrick. And, uh, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk here, and feel free to unmute now.
Thank you.
Uh, great, thank you so much. This is Brian Kilpatrick. I'm a Fairfield resident. And, uh, I'm part of a group of eight to ten people who play regularly at Allen Witt, pickleball, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings. And I want, just wanted to add to what other people were saying about the enthusiasm for pickleball. It's very easy to learn. It's got a much shorter learning curve than tennis and some of the other sports. And it's a better use of the space. It's very compact. It hasn't been mentioned here that for the space of one tennis court, you can fit two pickleball courts in. So in any conversions, uh, discussions, keep that in mind, that you can have more pickleball courts than tennis courts per the space you have. And the other part is, um, pickleball is a lot faster game. We play games to eleven, and at the end of that game, if people are waiting, you rotate the next people in. So you can get a lot more people playing, uh, for the same space. Um, and, and I also want to mention that one of the most important, uh, pieces of equipment that a pickleball player brings to a pickleball court is a chair. The reason why they bring chairs is there are not enough pickleball courts. People are always waiting. I play maybe six or seven different courts around the area within thirty miles. Every set of courts is full, and there's always a line. So there's a desperate need for pickleball courts. And you can also tell it's a desperate need, because we play in Allen Witt right now, and those courts are horrendous. They're like a safety hazard. So, uh, I fully applaud the, the city council for bringing this up, and, uh, Ryan, the engineer, thank you for all that work. Um, I would go with the option that gets it, uh, improve the fastest, because there's a desperate need for all those courts to be picked up. And I would also encourage, uh, to look at the ratios of pickleball courts to tennis courts. If you look around the area within thirty miles, it's usually a four-to-one ratio, four pickleball courts per tennis court. And that's in all the different parks that have dedicated, um, pickleball courts.
And would you conclude, please?
That might mean extra, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would you conclude, please?
Sure. Uh, anyway, I'm just saying, uh, also included in the plan should be, uh, permanent pickleball nets and refurbishment of the, uh, privacy screen on the fences around the courts, because that's in pretty bad shape, too. Thank you very much. Um, really glad you guys are looking at this. And now I'm through.
Thank you. Councilman Tonison, would you give a little background on why we were over there that morning, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, we've been getting a lot of, lot of requests for pickleball. Pickleball's become very, very huge. And I have had conversations with Mr. Kennedy, and he goes to tournaments that regularly draws two to three hundred people. So we need the courts. We can convert them, we, we, George said, there are four, four per court. So there's four court, pickleball courts per tennis court. And we can actually have down the road, uh, a stadium court where you could do either one if, if we started having tournaments here, which is something that I would really like to see. Uh, and just the league aspect, too, I think it's a, it would be really good, the, as you can see, the enthusiasm for this is, is very high. My question, Ryan, what is the timeframe for Phase One and Phase Two and/or Phase Two for completion?
The, the various options you're describing.
Let's just say, what's the Phase One?
Yeah, we would, so, um, what I'd estimate roughly is we would have, uh, a year of design and bidding, and then we would have construction commence. One of the key elements is we need to do it during the summer months. So we would, we would try to have the work starting and completing in the summer of, of twenty-three.
So could we start the bidding earlier than that and then be ready to build?
With just the uncertainties that we have with respect to making sure that we're, we're not only fitting the right program, program, the space correctly with the right amenity, pickleball tennis courts, and then just the unknowns as it relates to the, you know, specifying the correct playing surface, we want to make sure we do it right. So I think, uh, we, we just built in a little bit of contingency into that schedule. I think that's more realistic for us to have something spring, springtime start work of twenty-three and completion by summer of twenty-three.
Mr. City Manager, maybe we could talk later about timeframe. So the, so I'll date myself a little bit here. I, my first job was with the city in nineteen seventy-seven, and I was part of putting those tennis courts up, not a big part, but what happened to them? And, and when we do this, can we make sure that the, they don't get neglected again? Because I, I, for the life of me, can't figure out why they're, why they weren't maintained. So can we have a plan in place that, you know, guarantees that this won't happen again? Is just my request. And that's it for me. I'm, I'm, I'm glad that we're moving forward that, with this, and, uh, I'm excited to get it done, and sooner rather than later for me. Thank you.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. I, I have a question. The sports courts come under Phase Seven, right?
Correct.
When do you anticipate getting to that phase, realistically?
So right now, we don't have, so one of the, the key factors is, or one of the main components of this is the revenue that we use to, this is tied into also the Linear Park Node Foray. So, uh, development impact fees is a, is a key component to make sure that we can continue to progress on both projects at Allen Witt and at the Linear Park. So not only are we going to start construction of the, uh, new accessible play area in twenty-three, we're also hoping to progress on the new Linear, Linear Park Node Foray that's off on North Texas Street, the, in the subsequent year. So, so Phase Seven is, is, we don't have an anticipated timeframe for that work as the, as of today, because we want to make sure we complete those two major projects, Node Foray, and then the, um, Phase Three at Allen Witt.
Okay, is there a, is there a chance that the, the current location of the courts are going to be moved?
They, they, they don't, um, currently, as a, just, just for context, so for those courts, the southernmost would, would be, uh, demolished or relocated as part of the subsequent phases, correct?
Okay, and would they be replaced? Are we looking at eight total courts, both tennis and pickleball?
So actually, so this is a kind of a zoomed-in version of what the Phase Seven would entail. So what the plan shows currently is four tennis courts, four pickleball courts, a food stall court, and then a basketball court, two basketball courts, excuse me.
Okay. All right. I'll save my comments for, Ryan, thank you, sir.
Mr. City Manager, thank you very much for taking prompt action on this. And whatever decisions are made, that there needs to be a continuing funding mechanism to maintain those facilities. And that's part of our difficulty sometimes, and this is a good example. So I am so thrilled that those ladies invited us to go over and take a look at what they were playing in and using. The long-term goal should be to make certain that it's a viable operation. The long-term goal should be to make certain that it's a viable operation. Councilman Bertoni, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, presenters. Much appreciated. I'd never heard of pickleball before, so kind of sounds like something I could get into, actually. So what I would like to ask you is, when do you think that you can have, bring before us funding strategies for each of the options? Because it's hard to provide direction without, as, as Councilman Tim always says, you know, talking about how we're going to pay for it. So when do you think you can come back with some funding strategies? And then number two, because there does seem to be a considerable excitement and interest, we want to keep that momentum going. It's, it's great to have people out exercising and building relationships in the community. So is there a way that we can be responsive to the interest that's been demonstrated tonight? In other words, can we move this project up to happen sooner rather than later in the big scheme of things? So, I mean, we've got interests, we have support, we have, you know, the age range from eight to 80 or 90. I mean, that is tremendous. And so I'm just saying, what can the city council do to be responsive to what we've heard this evening in terms of enthusiasm? That was a two-part, very long question. Sorry.
So the first, the first part of it was when we could come back for the funding strategy. So what we would do is, so currently we have a landscape architect that's designing this current work that we have in the program. So we would get on, get, engage them. And when we have a negotiated contract with them for what the work entails, their, their design scope, we would be able to present then. So it would take us maybe a couple of months to come back to council.
Okay, fair enough. And that would be funding strategies for both option one and option two?
I, I'm looking for feedback with respect to what, what council would like us to?
Well, it's hard, I'm saying, I'm, I'm hard pressed to give you any meaningful feedback at this point because I don't have a funding strategy for either of those options in front of me. So until I have that information, it's going to be hard for me to weigh in meaningfully on whether we should do option one or option two.
So maybe this is too easy of an answer, but if the council gives direction to staff right now that you want those funding strategies put together, we can, of course, go back and start taking a look at, if we do option one and we're looking at approximately this, where can we get the money? That's pretty easy. We, we can probably find that kind of money somewhere. Option two, we can go back and take a look at where potential funding strategies are for that as well so that the council has information. And I think it wouldn't take two months. We can go take a look at, we can sit down with Emily and pull some numbers together, probably within the coming, where's Emily? And I'm losing Emily here soon, so is, is, I don't see Emily. Emily, raise your hand if you're here.
You lost her already, sir.[801.32][801.32](laughter)
Is Juan, is Juan here?
What I was, yeah, we could definitely look at-
We'll, we'll go back and pull some numbers and get this back to you much sooner than two months, at least so that you've got some preliminary stuff we can work on.
And that'll be funding strategies on both options?
Yeah, we can take a look at where the money could come from.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you. What I'm going to say is that you see the interest in pickleball. And pickleball has been around for a while and I think it's going to stay here for a while. But one of the things that nobody talks about, but is very apparent to me, is eyes on the park. We are spending millions and millions of dollars in the park. And we are continually hammered by homelessness, crime, graffiti. But when you have people there day in and day out, like I heard tonight, that tells me that they will make it an uninvitable area for people that are up to no good to come to. And it's very refreshing. And we've already spent, I can't tell you how many millions of dollars and how much more we're going to spend. And what I would recommend is, we'll find the money to, to fix it, 156,000 bucks. But more importantly, if this continues to grow, and I've had a lot of conversations with George Kennedy about this, is this is something we can turn into a positive for the city. And you start having pickleball tournaments and two, 300 people show up, they've got to stay in hotels, they have to eat in restaurants. And like I said, then, then the park becomes something that I remember back in the 70s, the place to go, not a place to avoid. So in our further discussions about item number seven, when you're going to move it up, let's give thought, times change. You know, we didn't know about COVID, but I didn't really know about pickleball. But let's figure out how we can expand it, yeah, make it nicer. I don't know much about the other sports courts there, but the park is for people to enjoy. And I, as soon as you can come back with numbers, like, like the city manager said, we can probably find 156,000 bucks. More importantly, how we keep it. And it sounds like the folks that play pickleball do a pretty good job, but nights, weekends, when it's not being used, that we make sure it's a priority with the city, with Public Works, with the police department, that we fix it. We don't want it destroyed. We don't want somebody calling us the next day saying, you're not going to believe what happened here. Understand, we can't, you can't prevent all crime, but, but it's really encouraging to hear that people want to help, they want to do it for free, they'll clean up, pick up. And I, that's what we're here for, so. And I guess I'm kind of preaching to my colleagues as well because 2023, well, 2022 is coming, 2023, I think we can probably do it quicker than that. And I know we put a burden on staff. As council members, we promise a lot, but we're not the ones that do the work. It's staff that does it, so we have to make sure that we hit an equal balance, but that's my two cents.
And Mayor, for qualification, and you mentioned this, if we were to do something like number one, option one, it's really a stopgap. You're looking at a three to five-year period on this. Council has a retreat the beginning of next year as you readdress and reassign priorities and things. And that may be a time when you want to sit down and take a look at the Allen Witt Park master plan and see, because you said, it's very fluid, things change, let's take a look. Do we feel like some things need to be changed in that? And should we go back and, and through that process? And until then, you've got three to five years here on, on something that will, will last for a little while until you get there.
Yeah, because there's no sense in spending 1.6 million if we're going to drive a tractor through it and move it. You know, especially if you want to expand it, but I, I don't think 156,000 is going to, going to kill the city, especially, like I said, I look at you as eyes on the park and you actually benefit the park and you make the park better for everybody. So I would say we move ahead. And if you come up with, like Councilwoman Bertoni said, you know, it's tough to kind of say, hey, it's a blank check. It's not really a blank check. If you're around 156K, I don't think there's going to be heartburn. If it comes in a lot higher than that, then obviously something we need to know. But that's the way I would lean and that's, that's what I would make a motion for if, if we needed one, Mayor. Thank you.
And I would also like you to take a good look at a sustainable solution for those who need to use restrooms. That's a very, very important element.
Thank, thank you for bringing that up. And that is something that we are looking very closely at because that's, that's a great point. Staff is working out some different options for good restrooms and, and options there for that because it is a need. You're right. Thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues? Will you have your, some direction? Thank you very much.
Is, are we going to make a motion on, is that an action item?
It's a direction item.
This is a direction item only, so you don't need to make a motion.
Okay, and then I liked what we said about in the future because if this takes off, I think this will be a good sample for us because if we have 200, 300, 400 people coming at tournaments, then when we go to the master plan for the park, we're going to definitely need more pickleball courts then. But, but thank you. Thank you very much, Ryan.
Item 15.
Go ahead, please.
Discussion and direction regarding a menorah lighting ceremony. And our presenter will be our city attorney, David Lim.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. I bring to you tonight item agenda number 15, a discussion and direction regarding a menorah lighting ceremony. This is an item raised by Councilwoman Catherine Moye, who brought to city staff's attention a request from Shabbat of Solano Center for Jewish Life and the Rabbi Shaim Zachlos to place a menorah next to the Christmas tree during the annual Christmas tree ceremony in downtown Fairfield. We bring it to the council tonight not because we need a resolution, but for direction because it is a city-sponsored event. You have the agenda report in front of you. I was brought in just because anytime there's a discussion of Christmas tree and holidays, there's naturally probably questions about the Establishment Clause and religious expression. The case law is pretty clear. There's a Supreme Court case on point that says that Christmas tree and a menorah are considered to be secular displays of the holiday season and not necessarily a religious communication. The leading case on point did talk about the fact that in the leading case out of Pennsylvania, there was a Christmas tree, a menorah, and a separate sign that proclaimed the liberties of Pittsburgh or something, some such. So our recommendation would be you, you have to keep the Christmas tree and menorah in close proximity. And we would recommend that council give direction to probably the mayor or whoever you want to designate, maybe Councilwoman Moye, since it was her idea, for a sign to just say something like happy holidays, you know, peace on earth. Otherwise, there's no financial burden to this. This is a donated menorah. And that's all I have. If anyone has any questions and make sure there's any public comments, if there need to be.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Councilman Moye, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. And Mr. City Attorney, I've just always been jealous that Vacaville had the menorah. And so I spoke with the rabbi and he really wanted for us to also have this cultural experience here in Fairfield. We are the heart of Solano County and as we know, the holidays are not just for Christianity. There are other things to celebrate, including our liberty. And so the rabbi was really excited about it and we have business people, that would be our friends who are just up here a few minutes ago who have agreed to, to pay and donate the menorah. And that's the Engelbriets, Jim and Val. And, and it's a big menorah, you know, the big lighting kind of thing. And so I just thought it would be really cool for us and hope that my colleagues would support that. I'm kind of excited about it. So that's it. And, and our city attorney was able to look at the case law and so I'm comfortable with that as far as our liabilities. He's looked at that very well. And also the Vacaville city attorney's own letters and so on explaining why, you know, it's, it's fine to do. Because again, it's not for a religious symbol, it's for the community and, and that's it. And so I was just hoping to add something more to our diverse city. That was it.
And I should like to point out that every year out at Jelly Belly, they do both the Christmas tree lighting ceremony and then they also, two separate events, they also do the menorah and it attracts a lot of people. So you can imagine what it's going to do for us here. Thank you for bringing that item forward, please.
At this time, I don't have any-
Councilman Bertoni, please.
-comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, Catherine, for taking this on. It means a lot to me. This community is inclusive and this is a physical manifestation of that reality. So I think it's a great idea and I look forward to how this, you know, how, how it plays out in the future. I'm in support of it. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you for sharing that. Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, just real quickly, you know, it's, it's actually ironic that we're doing this because in two weeks, we, we have the proclamation for united against hate. So, you know, I, this is, you know, very apropos. So thank you, Catherine, I appreciate it. And thank you, the Engelbriets, too, for donating, so.
Madam Clerk, we'll continue, please.
Okay, I was just going to check with Brian if there are any people on Zoom that wanted to comment on this item, item 15.
And we have no requests to speak at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and no one from the audience?
And just to check, Mr. Mayor, you, we have consensus from the council to, to go ahead with this. Okay, I'm seeing consensus. Thank you very much.
We do, yes, thank you. Item 16, Madam Clerk, please.
Item 16, discussion and direction regarding the alternatives report for the Fairfield Forward 2050 General Plan Update Project. And our presenter is Planning Manager, David Feinstein.
Good evening, Mayor Price, members of the city council. I'm Dave Feinstein. I am the city's planning division manager. And for our final item tonight, staff and consultants for our general plan update project will be walking the council through a discussion of alternatives for our general plan update. As I think you're all aware, for the last year, the update team, staff, and consultants with the firm, Diet &amp; Batia, have been working on preparing an update to the city's general plan. The last time we did this was about 30 years ago, 1992 was the last time the city took a complete look at how, how we should be growing and changing. And it's now about 30 years down the road and it, it's time that we look at the next 30 years. And so what we've been working on for the last year is the update to lay out the vision for how the city would grow, develop, and experience physical change for the next 30 years through about the year 2050. This is the third time, I believe, that the update team has met with the city council to discuss aspects of this project. The last time we met was in June and at that time, the update team presented to you an existing conditions report, a draft vision statement, and proposed guiding principles for our general plan. And we got direction and feedback from the city council at that time. And we also got some preliminary direction on preparation of alternatives for the general plan. So what we're going to do tonight is to walk you through three proposed visions or alternatives for how the city could grow, develop, and change over the next 30 years. And the team will solicit feedback from the city council so that we can take those alternatives, the parts that you like, the parts that you might not like, and craft what we would call the preferred plan or essentially a fourth alternative, which is the alternative that the city council would like to see put forth as our vision for the general plan for the next 30 years. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to the project manager for, with our consultant, Diet &amp; Batia, to walk the city council through this discussion, to present the alternatives, and then to solicit feedback from the city council on those. Allison?
Thank you so much, Dave, and good evening, council members. As Dave mentioned, I will first provide just a brief overview of how we've got to this point, as well as describe what, what the purpose of the alternatives are, what they do. Then just go through the concepts that we're seeking direction on tonight. Then I'm hoping we can take, with your approval, take public comment at that time and then go back and discuss these areas in more detail after public comment concludes. Is that all right with you all?
I would just say, thank you in advance, but I would just say, you know, we've got, we've got a house full of people here, so walk us through briskly and let's get down to business. Thanks.
And I have one statement, too. I'm already leaning towards a plan four, so I just wanted to get it out there early.[1708.12][1708.12](laughter)
Mr. Councilman Tonason, I'll second that motion. Thank you.
Have we adjourned?[1724.33][1724.33](laughter)
It's going to get interesting now. Here's our opportunity, so we'll continue, please.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead. So just a reminder, the planning area includes the city limits, the sphere of influence where the city could potentially annex and expand services, as well as the land surrounding Fairfield that bear relation to the future of the city. To recap where we are, we completed the initial phase of the project where we explored existing conditions and received input on the community's vision and priorities culminating in the vision and guiding principles. We're in the alternatives phase now. What comes next is the preferred alternative, which we're hoping to have that completed and for your review by the end of the year or early next year so we can get into the work of drafting the general plan in the spring with public release in summer and adoption consideration hearings in fall of 2022. We conducted a comprehensive range of community outreach related to visioning and in this phase, we've also had a robust level of participation through online and in-person events, as well as property owner interviews. We've had a virtual billboard, water bill inserts, weekly social media posts, videos in three languages, website comment forums. We presented to student leaners at Solano College and our- We presented to student leaners at Solano College, and our outreach specialist attended the Truck or Trunk or Treat event this past weekend. The alternative survey closed on the 25th, and we had close to 400 responses, which is a great turnout. The report is on the website now. Of note of that survey, we had significant youth participation, which we know is a major priority, with nearly 28% of survey takers of high school age, thanks to our GPAC member efforts. So just so everyone's on the same page, the purpose of the alternatives, what they are, how we'll be using the time tonight. Alternatives are different options for achieving growth and priorities used to help community members evaluate trade-offs and think about what they feel is the best way forward. They are conceptual. They represent a big-picture, 10,000-foot view of a direction. They are also a requirement of the environmental impact report, which in addition to a reasonable range of alternatives, also must consider a no-project alternative, or what might happen if the existing general plan were to continue on its current state. Each of the alternatives contains concepts. You don't have to liken alternative wholesale. These concepts can be mixed and matched to create our preferred alternative, which will form the basis of the full general plan update. The preferred alternative can contain other ideas not shown, or any of the concepts or aspects can be left out of our preferred alternative. We've developed these alternatives to serve as a starting place for answering big questions that are tied to community and decision-maker priorities that we heard about. And as you can imagine, people may have different opinions about what the best ways to answer these questions might be. Sometimes they require trade-offs or might bump up against priorities that others have. We won't solve all of these issues tonight with these alternatives, but in our next phase, the preferred alternative development phase and the policymaking phase, we'll get into addressing needs that might arise, alleviating traffic, needed infrastructure improvements, et cetera, through our more detailed policies. Before I get into the differences, I want to first mention the things that the alternatives have in common. They recognize the linear park trail as an important resource and connection for the city as a whole. They seek to preserve and expand industrial land, which is expected to be the largest growth sector in the city. And they follow decision-maker direction at the June 16 meeting to address what might happen in the cherry stem area to better connect Cordelia and Central Fairfield. And they assume a majority of development will occur through pipeline projects and our specific plans, projects that have already been approved and accounted for. There were a few comments in the survey about not wanting to see any more growth, and I just want to provide a general reminder for people why we're planning for growth. Change is inevitable. Citywide transformational impact is not the product of spontaneity. Instead, it is of constructive planning. 30 years down the line, we need to have a comprehensive plan that thinks thoughtfully about housing supply to help address affordability issues. Part of the reason why we have our affordability crisis that we do is because not enough housing is being built. And thinking, too, about housing types to meet the needs of Fairfield's diverse population, single-family, multifamily, providing for a range of incomes, of family types, whether there are opportunities to own homes or rent, all these factors are important. Housing development proposed in these alternatives beyond our pipeline projects and specific plan is modest in the span of over 30 years. Housing development and added population is important to support the economic feasibility of additional commercial, entertainment, and other amenities the community has said that they would like to see. Expanding economic opportunity is a key priority, and these alternatives plan for robust jobs growth. Planning for jobs in concert with housing has the benefit of reducing vehicle miles traveled, improving quality of life, and many other pluses. And all of these alternatives create more of a jobs-employed-residence balance, one of, a balance of one is what we strive for, and all of these push Fairfield in the direction of moving closer to that. Jobs growth also helps to create a positive fiscal impact, so the city has the funds for infrastructure, maintenance, and other improvements that we've heard residents desire. But this is not just a housing and job situation. We are planning for complete communities, planning for connectivity improvements in schools and park needs, as well as open space in agriculture. Where should the city grow? Where should it not grow? And that is our big question that we need to talk about today. The Alternatives Report provides a comprehensive look at each of them, the differences between them, but here is a top-line assessment of the major concepts and development potential. Alternative Three would result in the most number of units, while Alternative One would result in the most industrial and office growth. Transportation impacts vary, though all of them have similar VMT reduction, and all of them reduce VMT beyond what would just occur if the plan were to carry forth without any changes. Alternative Two has the least cost for infrastructure, and Alternative Three has the greatest surplus. And then I'll just walk quickly through some of the main concepts in each of them. Alternative One, New Neighborhoods and Connections builds on Fairfield's reputation for affordable homeownership, adding new single-family neighborhoods and a new walkable, bikeable community that connects Cordelia and Central Fairfield and Solano College to the transportation center in downtown. Cordelia Junction and the area around Solano College becomes a knowledge hub, adding more housing for students and creating pathways to medical, research, and manufacturing jobs. And a redesigned road will allow bicyclists, bus riders, and others to share the road safely to the future Pacific Flyway Center. Alternative Two, Transformed Corridors and Transit-Oriented Development builds links between new multifamily homes, jobs, and amenities along key corridors such as North and West Texas, and around the transit centers such as Fairfield-Sassoon Train Station and Transportation Center. The Sonoma-Morin Area Rail Transit Line could come to Solano County and connect to the Amtrak Line. This alternative would create a new transit-oriented neighborhood around an envisioned train stop in Cordelia. This follows the 2018 State Rail Plan that identifies a Solano County hub to link to the Capitol Corridor, future smart trains, and regional buses. And while other locations were identified in Solano Transportation Authority's feasibility study, these locations were around freeways, which meant a limited opportunity to create transit-oriented development because of air quality concerns, noise concerns, things like that. The area around Cordelia Junction in this alternative becomes a jobs corridor with land for research and development areas, light manufacturing uses, business parks, and flexible office uses. And then Alternative Three, Community Centers creates new mixed-use areas to add population needed to support new amenities that add to quality of life, such as grocery stores, entertainment centers, parks, and other resources. We've heard that people want more of these amenities and more commercial, but part of that reality is that there has to be a market large enough to support these uses. This alternative also creates a new community north of I-80 called an Agri-Hood, which is a neighborhood that intentionally has an agricultural component and can preserve agricultural use. The alternative also envisions the mall as a community center, complete with medium and high-density housing, community uses, green space, or an urban forest, and employment uses. So our objective tonight is to talk through which concepts we want to advance forward, which ones we want to leave out, et cetera. There are nine that we are seeking direction on, but we'd like to hone in on these five areas in bold, where we could use additional discussion, or where public opinion differed slightly from the Planning Commission's direction. You're also welcome to bring up or discuss any of these other concepts that aren't in bold. You're welcome to say that you don't want to see a concept carried forward, but it would be great to talk about what you think the implications of that might be. So I'm just going to go through these very quickly. These ones in red are the ones where we'd like more robust discussion. Orange is where there was a little bit of difference between what we heard. And then the green ones, we have an alignment between public input and Planning Commission. So overall, top-line, high-level findings, most people, like people who spoke, prefer a mix of our fourth alternative. Among people preferring a mix, they wanted to see a combination of infill of two with the community centers and three. And of the other comments that we received on the survey, approximately 14% wanted a preferred alternative that did not include any development or urban expansion in Sassoon Valley. Of the individual alternatives, one, two, or three, two is the most preferred, but three followed close behind at 26%. So Cordelia Junction, the area around Business Center Drive, southwest of Solano College, and around Pittman Road is what I'm referring to when I say Cordelia Junction. We'll talk about Nelson Hill later on. Currently, the area is a mix of industrial office and some commercial. Alternative One envisions this area as a knowledge hub, as I mentioned, with medical offices, research, manufacturing, medium and high-density housing for students. Alternative Two designates a whole area as a jobs corridor, research and development office. And Alternative Three is more of that mixed-use center. We heard that 34% of the respondents preferred the neighborhood center concept. Of our other comments, there were 28 comments related to agricultural preservation adjacent to this area, with 25 comments citing concerns about infrastructure or desire for more commercial and less housing. Among our workshop participants, there was a preference for a mixed-use node similar to Alternative Three, similar to the survey. And then next, followed by the jobs corridor over the knowledge hub. Our general plan advisory committee slightly preferred the jobs corridor. And then among property owners that we spoke with, the number one shown there, the union property, there is a high degree of interest in residential, but they're open to exploring different types of housing, such as senior housing, medium or high-density residential. Property owners in two, the Garaventa property here, they indicated that they have been trying, it's currently zoned for highway commercial, they've been trying for only retail for the past, you know, almost over a decade to no avail. And they desire on these multiple properties, a medium or high-density with a smaller commercial component in this area. And then in this area, they do prefer high-density residential. As an alternative to the housing and commercial shown here, they also said that they could be, they'd be comfortable with an industrial use, too. And at our Planning Commission meeting, our commissioners were divided between two and three. I can get into more detail later on. So our next area where we'd like your input is the area north of I-80 to Rockville Road. We explored this use in this area to help unify Cordelia and Central Fairfield. Alternative One creates that new walkable, bikeable neighborhood, and putting eyes on the linear trail there. Two keeps the area as is. Three creates an Agri-Hood, which I mentioned includes residential and agricultural uses, could also include an educational or agritourism component. It was our attempt to balance housing need and agricultural preservation. Community input on this, so 40% chose Alternative Three, but there were 88 other comments that said that they did not want any development in Sassoon Valley. Most of these were about preserving Sassoon Valley agriculture by keeping the current city limit lines, not allowing any development. And then this, in the survey, too, there was, it asks about preserving agriculture as a climate change strategy. This was our highest-rated strategy there. At the workshop, there was a low level of support for the Agri-Hood concept, even less for the new neighborhood and Alternative One, though there was some skepticism and some curiosity about what an Agri-Hood entailed. Our GPAC members were divided between no expansion, no development, but some mentioned that an Agri-Hood could provide clustered housing or an educational component with the college and could serve as a unifying center for Fairfield and gateway to the valley as a whole. Our property owners that I spoke with, number one here was open to annexation for services, but desired to learn more about what the timeline for implementation might entail. It had a preference for a noise-compatible land use type. They're an institution that's over here. And then number two discussed hotel use, agriculturally oriented commercial service station, or their continued institutional use here. And then farmers from the county who attended the workshop and who I'm sure you'll hear from tonight, did not want to see any development or annexation in Sassoon Valley. At our Planning Commission meeting, it was unanimous that there was preference for Alternative Two, which is no change to this area. South of I-80 to the marsh, in Alternative One, we expand industrial uses to accommodate that growth. Alternative Two creates our transit-oriented neighborhood around a train stop in Cordelia. And in Alternative Three, some agriculture remains with some industrial expanded south of Cordelia Road here. There was no survey or workshop question that focused on north versus south. It was just what should happen overall, so the same survey results apply. 40% choosing Alternative Three, but many comments about not wanting any development. At the workshop, as with north of I-80, skepticism about an Agri-Hood. Heard from property owners in this area, too, that they did not want to see development. And farmers, I mean, our GPAC, there was agreement that development south of I-80 could take pressure off of north of I-80 because it is that contiguous valley to the north. Of the property owners I spoke with are, number one over here had a preference for the area to remain agriculture and open space, but showed support for agritourism and perhaps a live-work community. Property owners with number twos shown here were open to annexation and had a ranked preference for specialized research and industrial, industrial-agricultural, or the transit-oriented neighborhood. So in essence, flipping the agricultural and industrial shown in Alternative Three. And then our Planning Commission did not have any strong affinity or did not prefer any of the three options. There was one indication of some preference for Alternative Two, some desired a reconfiguration of Alternative Three. And then our other residential neighborhoods, it's not realistic to assume that all new development will be multifamily. Locations of new neighborhoods to continue to add single-family homes are shown here. And some of these include Alternative One, this is Nelson Hill here, which is this area right here. The sphere of influence west of Business Center Drive, which is over here. And then this area by Lyons Road, which is just to the west of Paradise Valley Drive, which is only shown in Alternative One. We had minimal comments about what should happen in these areas, four comments about keeping open space in Nelson Hill. One submitted comment about support of development near Lyons Road, another one raising the fire risks that occur there. The Nelson Hill property owner indicated an interest in lower-medium density, single-family or duets, and multifamily at the base of the hill to add to the housing stock. And then Sino submitted their comments after alternatives were developed, but they have an interest in redesignating their properties here, I can talk about existing uses later on, to medium-density residential. Our Planning Commission indicated that they preferred to keep Nelson Hill open space. West of the Business Center, they did not desire to see any change from its very low-density category that's existing. And then preference for no development near Lyons Road, though one was okay with it. For downtown, downtown's already the focus of the heart of Fairfield Plan, an important piece of the city overall. Alternative One lets development proceed as planned. Alternative Two focuses higher-density housing around the transportation center and then adds some multifamily and medium-density housing just to the south in this area, and then adds mixed uses to the edges of the city to create more of an entryway to the Fairfield-Sassoon Train Station. This alternative also would create a bus rapid transit line to connect north and west Texas. Alternative Three creates more of a mixed-use center around the transit station and seeks to enhance connections with other community nodes like the mall that I mentioned. This was an area where there was definitive community support for change. Alternatives Two and Three both add additional housing near the transit hubs. There was a slight preference for Alternative Two with a focus on that transit-oriented development. At our workshop, there was a high level of support for our mixed-use nodes, Alternative Three, which is inclusive of our hub here. The GPAC continued to stress the importance of downtown redevelopment and a focus on this area. And then our Planning Commission indicated support for Alternative Two with some of the aspects of Alternative Three, that mixed use around the transportation center, with one vote for Alternative One. Solano Town Center, this is our alternatives, our first one would have minimal change there. Alternative Two would propose some mixed-use, higher-density housing along Pennsylvania. And then Alternative Three is our full transformation with multiple components there. And at this area, people were largely divided, actually, between keeping the mall as is and major transformation, though there were another 3% who left another comment that just desired some type of reconfiguration to what the components are in the major transformation. But amongst our youth, 51% desired major transformation, 37% preferred the mall remained the same. At our workshop, mall redevelopment was one of the most popular concepts, and then And then our planning commission also supported alternative three, the transformation. North Texas proposes various levels of change. Alternative one being the least, alternative two being the most, with residential, commercial, community service uses, and public realm improvements in our rapid transit line. Alternative three pairs that down a little bit and has more of nodes of activity. Some mixed-use but less than alternative two. 44% of our survey respondents supported major redevelopment along North Texas, that is alternative two. Public realm improvements as means to improve connectivity was a very highly rated priority. This was also a very popular concept amongst our workshop attendees and of our GPAC who desired to see development in concert with that transit improvement. And then our planning commission had a preference for alternative two, some desired a mix for alternative three, that more pared-down development. Our other concepts included a redesigned Gold Hill Roads, has only proposed in alternative one to accommodate bicyclists, pedestrians, cars, or transit. The planning commissioners supported this idea, and there was some support for this concept in the survey, though there were some concerns about traffic and existing roadway issues. But the planning commission was unanimous in support for redesign. And then finally, Travis Air Force Base. We explore the idea of an enhanced-use lease area, which the base has indicated their desire for. And so as a way to connect to that, in addition to supporting with more housing, there would be a connection from the train station to this new node. The GPAC did support this connection and noted that it also would help to connect to schools as well. And then our planning commission indicated support for this connection so long as we continue to collaborate with Travis on this concept. So with that, I will turn it over to public comment, and then we can come back and discuss those five main areas. And then if there's any of the other concepts that you'd like to discuss, we can do so at that time. Thank you. Oh, are there any questions before we break?
Any comments or questions for our presenter first?
Generally, not, I can get into questions about the specific areas when we come back, but any general questions?
Yeah. So we'll go right now to public comments, please, and thank you for being patient with us.
Okay, our first speaker is Monica Brown.
All right. Hello, everybody. So I'll have to do this quickly. So my name is Monica Brown, and I am the County Board of Supervisor representing District Two, specifically both Cordelia and Incorporated and Incorporated. I ask you to put a pause on going forward with the general plan so we can come up with an alternative that does not take away ag and open space in Cordelia or Sassoon Valley. Tonight cannot be the time that we make all this decision. What you need to do is you need to have an outreach with the community, whether at Sassoon Valley and Cordelia, and the ag people, and have this conversation, because having it done in one night, this is why there's a problem with it, is that the general plan is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to decide what our city will look like. At the county, I'm constantly told, we must allow a certain project or development because of the general plan. We will be stuck with whatever we put in this general plan for decades to come. We need to take the time to get it right. The ag and open space in our county is what makes us unique. The voters of Solano County voted to keep our open space. We should honor that by protecting our open space. As a resident of Cordelia Villages, I am not here saying not in my backyard, Cordelia has been the center of housing development for Fairfield for a long time, with more development to come. We have accepted more than our fair share of housing development. It would be wrong to take away the rural aspect of rural Cordelia. Any housing we gain from taking away ag will not be affordable housing. It will be expensive housing, out of reach for most Solano County residents. In fact, the new ones being built on the top are 800,000 or greater. Let's see, it will, this is not worth taking away our ag and open space. Let us take the time to get it right. There's no need to hurry. And if you read through your staff report, there's no financial impact to provide direction on alternatives. It is an impact of the general plan update project. In other words, it's not going to cost you any more money, guys, to take more time for this. And anytime I hear about Nelson Hill, all I do is think about it catching on fire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nora Dezen, followed by Nancy Nelson.
Mayor Price, City Council members, good evening. I'm here to request that there is a pause to this general plan update. There are so many misrepresentations in these alternatives that have been proposed that there needs to be some sort of audit to check, to double-check facts, because look at the alternative two, which includes a Cordelia Smart Train. Well, there is none. That has been verified by A-BAG and also by STA. There is no Cordelia train station. Same thing about schools, they've got these icons here and there. There's no new school. Anyway, there needs to be an audit to find out what's reality here. It seems like there's a game. We need to be making people happy living in this city, not using eminent domain to take away property from people in the county. What a horrible way to have a general plan. We're supposed to make our city better, not worse. And with all the, what I would call misrepresentation that's been going on, we need to be able to be giving, given truthful facts, a chance to provide feedback on proposed zoning changes for every vacant parcel. Every property owner seeking annexation should be identified and development plans should be disclosed. Again, please don't employ hostile eminent domain to expand the city. This is just a horrible way. This is not being a good neighbor. Please improve the city, and please make us happy to live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question? Have we proposed eminent domain? No eminent domain has been proposed. Thank you.
Next speaker Nancy Nelson, to be followed by George Kennedy.
Nancy, it's good to see you, and thank you for Trader Joe's in Fairfield.
You're most welcome. Hey, all council members, thank you very much for your time tonight. I respectfully requested at the beginning of the meeting, a couple of extra minutes. As a design professional who's provided housing in this county for over 30 years, I want to share a story with you about villages of Fairfield that we spoke to earlier. So if you could kindly guide me a couple of extra minutes, that would be great. And also, I want to give props to Allison, I don't know your last name. Very, very difficult job, and you're doing it very well.
And for bringing Trader Joe's here, you have an extra two minutes, please.
Okay, that's great. I would like to think it's because of all the housing I've brought to the city, but that's okay. All right, I wanted to speak. Three quick comments that I think we are a little bit ill-advised aspects of these plans. One being the obvious of converting prime agricultural land, not for the reasons, all these great reasons behind me, but because for food security. United Nations, National Geographic Society, U.S. Department of Agriculture, prime agricultural soil is very special in its physical and chemical components for providing food. For our long-term food stability, we should not make the irreversible decision to pave prime agricultural land. Second thing, I too am perplexed by the Cordelia train station. It doesn't exist. The Solano Transit Authority, in their comments, stakeholder comments, highly touted the Fairfield Downtown Sassoon Station and encouraged development around that train station. And the third is agri-hoods. When we talk about agri-hoods, I was a citizen advisory committee member for the Middle Green Valley Specific Plan, which is a highly touted agri-hood. It is extraordinarily complex to develop, and it's very, very expensive to develop. It's very, very unlikely these two very small neighborhoods could ever come to fruition because of the complexity of agri-hoods. If someone wants to live in agri-hood, very high-end exclusive communities, you're going to have a beautiful one on your doorstep in Middle Green Valley. So those are the things that we shouldn't do. What we should do, the North Texas Corridor, alternative two, continue to develop the heart of Fairfield. It is good for the retail, it is good, infill development increases the vitality of neighborhoods, and it brings jobs to your city. Moderate-level housing, which now is getting almost out of reach for most families, that's the kind of housing we need, not high-end, more housing on the edges. The story I want to tell you, I think a lot of you know, I work for an architectural firm that develops production housing. Our clients are Lennar Homes, TriPoint Homes, D.R. Horton, Meritage Homes, the biggest home builders in the country. A couple of years ago, I was a designer for this project. I know it doesn't say villages of Fairfield. These houses, if you guys recognize them, are the houses our firm designed for villages of Fairfield, which you just voted on the bond for tonight. Well, you know what D.R. Horton has done? In my recent years in production housing, there's been a major pivot. Production home builders only looked at suburban and edges of cities, new tentative maps to develop housing. I had thought it would always be that way. A couple of years ago, the home builders, as lots got more scarce and as cities deteriorated because of all the building on the edges, the builders are starting to look to the interior. So these houses, this says LaPlaya Commons, it's in Hayward. Do you want to know where it is? This is the Hayward Southland Mall. This is Burlington Coat Factory that closed two years ago. We took this piece of land, less than five acres, and now have 47 houses. The City of Hayward approved this last week. This is a current project. The neighbors came out and drove supporting it, because this building is covered in graffiti, homeless camps, all of the problems that happen when you have vacant, underused land in your city core. These things can happen. Many people say builders won't do infill, they will do it. So these houses, designed for the City of Fairfield, are now being built, or will be built next year in Hayward. On top of that, D.R. Horton came to us with this project in Gilroy, the same exact houses on an infill lot in Gilroy. Sorry, I don't have exhibits for you guys all to see, but my story is, not that I'm special, but I'm kind of an expert in production housing. I've been at it for 30 years, and have built a lot of houses in Solano County. I am so proud, as Harry knows, to have been part of providing homes, which is, for most Americans, your greatest source of wealth is homeownership and financial stability. And as Mayor Price, I'm sorry, I'll do Harry, but I've been involved in everything from Habitat for Humanity to very high-end housing, and I'm very, very proud to help people have homeownership housing. And it's changed, and be open to the way it's changing. In both the heart of Fairfield Plan and the plan that we saw before today, there are catalytic sites or prime sites for redevelopment in downtown Fairfield, where we can have moderate-level housing, where we can have people thriving, and more people on North Texas Street, the eyes on the street that Supervisor Tim talked about, and supporting the retailers and restaurateurs who are struggling downtown. So anyway, thank you for the extra time. I greatly appreciate it, and it's very cool to see Fairfield houses built in other communities. They started here, guys. That's it. Thank you.
Well done, Nancy. Thank you.
Next speaker is George Kennedy, to be followed by Leslie Batson.
I want to preface something really quick. Allowing two minutes to speak on 37.6 miles of city limits, not including the surrounding areas, is very disrespectful to the voice of the citizens of this area. Alternative four should be the avenue that should be pursued, with this alternative leaving annexation and putting together a plan that works for the citizens, Fairfield, and our neighbors. Fairfield has invested a lot of money to ensure the success of the valley. This investment is paying off. Why would you want to risk that? Why? This is the perfect pitch, or pivot, however you want to look at it. Make a part of a plan so egregious that all the focus is on that instead of the rest of the plan. Is a planning commission meeting, there were nine elements discussed. Break each of these up and discuss each of them separately at subsequent meetings or workshops. Rushing through this benefits no one. Adding additional time would add less than 1% of the life of the 2050 plan. Allowing the public, oh, I already said that. Gold Hill, number eight. How patronizing can you guys be? Bring up a road that's over a mile long that already has the elements that are being discussed, all but a couple hundred feet of that. One of the commissioners talked about change needed to be needed because of two accidents involving children in front of Cordelia Hills Elementary School. That wasn't on Gold Hill Road. That was at my court where I live, off Canyon Hills. It's almost a mile for any of the work that would be done. The rest wouldn't be touched, because it's already been done.
George, would you conclude, please?
Sure. The planner talked about talking to landowners. Ironically, they were all developers, not the farmers that have been here for generations whose interests are at stake for now and future generations. Alternative four, please.
The communications manager just asked me to tell you to stay about six inches away from the microphone, because it's causing distortion. Thank you. And our next speaker is Leslie Batson, to be followed by Jack Batson.
I wanted to say three quick things. One is that in 2003, we thought the land wars had ended when the citizens of Fairfield overwhelmingly voted for an urban growth boundary. And this city council refused to put this item back on the ballot when it came up for renewal. And we all wondered why. And now, after seeing these plans, we understand clearly why, because there were eyes on annexing a valuable part of our community, not part of our city, but the borrowed landscape of our city, Sassoon Valley. I was an emissary to our sister city near Isaki twice, and one thing I learned in Japan was that they revere Mount Fuji as borrowed landscape, something that everyone enjoys, even though it's not in their particular backyard. Sassoon Valley is our borrowed landscape. And I wish that you would honor that critical aspect of how it improves the quality of life for the inhabitants of Fairfield, as well as ensuring the livelihood of those people who live and work in Sassoon Valley. And the third thing I want to mention is that there's obviously a missing element in this general plan, and that's pickleball courts.
Next, we have Jack Batson, to be followed by John Hewitt.
Thank you, Council. Jack Batson, former council, as you know. It seems like there's some eagerness to get to that fourth alternative. And I get a sense that this is going to be a good thing. So I will change these comments that I'm going to make, because honestly, I was afraid they might ignite there in my lap, sitting there. So we'll just put these aside and mention a few things. There is a perception out there, really, there's a perception that it's sort of a conspiracy to go into the valley. There is no constituency in this city that I know of that wants to move into that valley. That's the jewel in the whole area's crown, much less our city's. And so I would like you to put that away. The conspiracy, you know, comes when you allowed the voter-approved urban limit growth boundary to expire, and when you had a citizens advisory committee that was meeting in secret at first, and thank you for changing that, but it roused a lot of suspicion. Just remind you of my motto always, you should be representing the long-term best interests of everyone in the city. That's your job. There's no other job that you have. And it was looking for a while, and maybe it is, maybe it isn't, that that was going to be betrayed. So that would incur great reputational damage to anyone who votes for that. I would just like to remind you of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, oh, is it Jan Hewitt? I'm sorry. I apologize. To be followed by Chris Engel.
Have some tall speakers here. Yes, I am Jan Hewitt. Yes, I am Jan Hewitt, a retired county supervisor representing Sassoon Valley and the 3rd District. And a number of good, clean, hard-working people live there and want their livelihood protected. And you seem to be wanting to encroach. You take that line, the line coming in, you look at the illustrations, don't get blown away by all the super-duper things. Keep in mind that there are people who live and work in that valley. And by having brought alcohol, tobacco, and firearms here when I was on the board, and we were able to provide a marketplace for Sassoon Valley grapes with the entire region, saying that along with Napa, we've been selling them, they've been selling them, Napa, for years, even before it was approved, but it is important to keep that. It's here. People move in. I'm in an area where new people are moving in, and they're saying, "Oh, yes, can we go out to the valley? Can we go?" You have a tourist attraction, and you also have very fertile land that will never be replaced, unless you put concrete over it, and don't you dare, I'll come back and haunt you.
Jan, you still have it.
What I want to tell you is that if it isn't broken, don't fix it. Leave Sassoon Valley as it is. Let them build and bring people in there and enjoy it. It's something totally unusual, and everybody who goes there loves it. Where is your urban limit line for the city?
Would you please, Jen?
You replaced it? Where? I haven't seen it. And the agritourism is already here. And let us do it properly, but, you know, if it isn't broken, don't fix it. Leave us, the Sassoon Valley, it's so special. The earth will be there long after we go.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Engel, to be followed by Jim DeClo.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Chris Engel, and I live at 3750 Thomason Lane, which is south of I-80 and south of Cordelia Road. And I'm requesting that you allow time for a fourth alternative to be developed. One of the key points that came out of the feedback that is on the Fairfield 2050 website is that Sassoon Valley and prime ag land should not be developed. It also doesn't appear that there was enough research done regarding the flooding that occurs on Sassoon Creek in our area. I've lived there for over 30 years, and my house has been surrounded by water in '95, '97, 2006, and twice in 2017. The last time the water got into my house, and I spent six months repairing it. One of my other neighbors, he had his house flooded, and he didn't have flood insurance because the bank, his mortgage company, didn't require him to have flood insurance because the FEMA flood maps did not have that as a flood zone despite our lived experience of having flooding on a fairly regular basis. In addition, we also don't feel that this process has been transparent. We didn't find out that our lands were slated for development until about three or four weeks ago. Not even our county supervisor knew that, nor did members of the Ag Board. We feel that this process is being rushed through without our input. Many of the families have been living in this area for decades, including mine, which has lived there for over 100 years. And what we see when we look at these three alternatives is simply an eviction notice, telling us to get out. Ultimately, we would like the opportunity to work with, have our representatives work with you all, to come up with a fourth alternative that will give Fairfield what it needs in terms of growth, but also leave the valley intact. Thank you.
Next speaker, Jim DeClo, to be followed by James Edwards.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm Jim DeClo, and I've lived in Fairfield for over 30 years. And that seems like a long time, but I'm a newbie compared to many of the people in the room and many of you. I moved here after teaching at UC Santa Cruz, and I noticed that there was a notice, a opening at Solano College, and I was driving and went off the freeway, and I went through the Sassoon Valley. And it was just so beautiful, I said, "Not only am I going to apply to that college, I'm going to, I want that job really bad." And so I've given my professional life to this community, to this county, and to this region. And I want, what didn't come up in the presentation by the consultants and by the staff was really a flavor of the planning commission meeting. And I have to say, time after time, I am so proud to be a member of this community. The speakers, look how articulate they were. Look at the expertise that we bring, citizens bringing expertise to this. And what happened in the planning commission, there were 30, I counted 38, the newspaper said 34, 38 out of 38 said a fourth alternative. The plans here, they have names. I call them the sprawl, the bad, and the ugly. So for the first time, somebody has gone after Sassoon Valley. In the past, sacred is not the right word, but untouchable was the right word. We've never had anyone go after Sassoon Valley in the past, and we just can't let that go now. You saw the plans for infill development. We can accomplish everything that we need to accomplish within the existing city limits, and let's please reject any proposal that has Sassoon Valley. It's our jewel, it's beautiful, and it's economically sustainable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Next speaker is James Edwards, to be followed by Sharon Peterson.
Councilmen, ladies, I'm Jim Edwards. I've been a resident of Fairfield since April of 1964. I raised my family here. I taught at Sassoon, and I've been a substitute teacher at the high schools. Professionally, I was with the feds for 47 years. I've been to the Federal Executive Institute in Public Program Management and Planning. I'd like you to consider maintaining Fairfield within the existing city limits for a different reason than I've heard tonight. And that is, population trends in the United States are leveling off. In the next 30 to 50 years, we are not going to need the housing that we're building now. We need to concentrate on all those slums that were new houses that Bob Schaefer built years ago. Now, Bob's a good friend of mine, and I'm sorry to see him go, and I'm glad his stadium's up there, but those houses aren't going to last. And we've got a lot of blight in our city. We need redevelopment. We need to reach out and meet the needs of people who are less fortunate, I guess, than I am. And I'd like you to think about where we're going 30 to 50 years from now, where we are going to have to develop within the city. We don't need to be reaching outside the limits. This town is not going to have a lot of industrial jobs. It's mostly going to be a community where people live and they go somewhere else to work. We just don't have the industrial jobs.
Would you conclude, please?
Sorry?
Would you conclude?
Certainly, Mayor. So I ask you to think about those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sharon Peterson, to be followed by Joe Greenheffern.
Good evening, Mayor Price, members of the board. I want to thank you very much for this time. I've listened, and I have too been touched by all the stories and the interest in the community. It's interesting that I myself have come to this community. I am a resident and property owner in Lower Green Valley, and came to live here as my dad used to work in this community. He was a builder. He worked on a project. And I was moving from the East Coast. My husband and I, Greg Peterson, were looking for a place in California to reestablish ourselves because we're both from California. And when my father drove me up Green Valley, excuse me, up Sassoon Valley Road, I couldn't believe it. Couldn't believe the orchards, couldn't believe the combination of landscape. And what it said to me is what we had in Hawaii where I'm from, when you have that blend of agriculture with life, it enriches life. It not only enriches, it teaches. And that's very necessary for all that we're experiencing in life and for the young people to know. In Lynch Canyon, I was on a walk one day with a person who said that they bring people here from other areas of county that have never seen a cow and don't know that that's hamburger. And they don't understand where their food comes from. That's a value, too. It educates, and it provides a quality of life, and that is the gem, something that's untouchable, that is rich and vibrant and should not be touched. And that's to not annex the property and do anything to Sassoon Valley that will eradicate the beauty and the agriculture that's there for life. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Joe Greenheffern, to be followed by Carolyn Lewis.
Hello. My name is Joe Greenheffern, and I am a Fairfield resident and a member of the Solano County Orderly Growth Committee. I've written to each of you and spoken at last week's planning commission meeting about the need for a fourth alternative that you're hearing, needless to say, have been hearing about. However, I want to add a slightly different take, given my perspective as a geotechnical engineer. That is, I'm a civil engineer who specializes at the intersection of human and built infrastructure with geology. In coming to build more sustainable infrastructure over the last century, geotechnical engineers have learned that we must work with and not against natural geologic processes. Expressed differently, you might remember, refrain, at least those of you over 50, from an old chiffon margarine commercial, "It's not nice to fool with Mother Nature." With that understanding, otherwise you pay the consequences. So what does that mean for Fairfield's general plan update? Sassoon Valley is a flood plain. The flat bottom lands or creeks have washed down soils from the hills over eons. It is the reason we have developed rich soils, have aquifers that store groundwater, and are prone to flooding, as one of the farmers testified. The valley is a good place for agriculture. In fact, it is the highest and best use for the land and should be preserved. Paving over more prime agricultural bottom lands is a waste of a precious resource that we can ill afford. And with more extreme weather expected in our changing climate, conversion of these agricultural lands to urban development will increase flood damage consequences to the city. So I urge you to protect Sassoon Valley from urban development and support its true value as a place for local agriculture. This is in the best long-term interest of the city. Thank you.
Next is Carolyn Lewis, to be followed by Ross Erickson.
Good evening. Can you hear me through this? Okay. The last time Fairfield updated its general plan, I had the privilege of serving on one of the Vision 2020 committees. The whole process included hundreds of citizens who devoted thousands of hours, all to ensure that the new guiding document fit our vision for our community's future. I'm sure that the consultants who are running the process this time are competent and interested in ushering us into a bright future, but what they lack is a sense of community history. We are a city and county that have, over and over, affirmed that we want development within city boundaries and no development of prime ag land, especially in Sassoon Valley. We have locals whose families have lived here for generations, who know what areas are not suitable for any type of development because they frequently end up underwater. We heard that tonight again. We have business owners who know that protecting Travis Air Force Base's mission is vital to our local economy. And we have community members who know how our open spaces and available outdoor activities enhance the quality of their lives. There is so much untapped knowledge and expertise available. At the planning commission meeting last week, there was almost unanimous agreement on one thing, that none of the plan alternatives were a fit for our community. Watching the whole process was painful. None of the options were understood adequately for the choices to be made. When the most frequently asked questions in these meetings are, "Why haven't we heard about this?", or, "Why didn't anyone ask what we thought?", or, "Why aren't there other alternatives?", maybe it's time to pause the process and reassess. In many ways, our community hasn't changed radically since the late 1980s, and it was 1988 when we started. I had a tiny baby at the time.
And would you conclude, please, ma'am?
Pause a process and then switch gears to make the general plan update a citizen-powered, consultant-aided process. Our community members are forward-thinking, but more than anything else, they care about here, and they want to continue it to be a place they can call home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ross Erickson, to be followed by Jill Strickland.
Good evening, Ross Erickson. I'm a lifelong Fairfield resident, a small business owner and landowner. I live in city limits, and my family owns property and runs, excuse me, two businesses in the county south of I-80 in the area of proposed development. I'm here tonight representing all the farmers, ag folks, property owners, and neighbors in Sassoon Valley that stand to be affected if any three of the current alternatives are approved. We strongly oppose any further development of prime agricultural land in Sassoon Valley. My family's been on the farm, the same land, for four generations, as well as some of my neighbors, and to think that we face the possibility is deeply disturbing. As we all know, real estate is finite. Prime ag land is an extremely rare commodity that we can't afford to lose to industrial, commercial, or residential development. The importance of preserving it can't be understated. The fact that this proposal being rushed through, and many of the residents and members of Solano County were not notified until this late in the game feels like a stab in the back, and quite frankly, an impending eviction notice from the land that our families broke their backs to purchase as part of the American dream. We've cared for and been stewards of the land, provided food and beverage products to the community from the land, and as part of a very small population of new generation agriculture in this area, we continue to develop our businesses and ag enterprises. Agritourism in Sassoon Valley is already a huge draw for the local community. What else is there to do in Fairfield? With the thriving wine trail, a handful of remaining produce stands, nice restaurant and taprooms, and more being added every year, it's really one of the only options for folks to get out and enjoy. All this is on prime ag land. And to think that it's okay to take this away and put up concrete tilt-ups and overpriced jam-packed housing is absurd. Sassoon Valley became a world-renowned region for its produce and wines and needs to be protected. On top of this, a significant portion of development is slated to be put in a flood zone. I wonder how many environmental studies have been done to estimate the impact of local biology and habitat when the creeks, neighboring drainage, and floodplain areas that are altered to handle the floods that affect our region every 10 years or so. I'd like to see that.
And would you conclude, please?
Please listen to the people's community, and let's develop a fourth alternative, one that preserves and solidifies viable economic and financial growth for our ag land and industry in Sassoon Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jill Strickland, to be followed by Craigan Rutherford.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. I'm a 52-year resident of Sassoon Valley. I went to Sassoon Valley School with Catherine back in the day, and I love it there. I echo the sentiments of everyone who has spoken this night. And I appreciate that I feel like you really are listening to us. We had the same experience last Tuesday with the commissioners, and I think I just want to make a couple of new points in addition to the other ones being made. We have this amazing soil that is a precious resource. It's just not found in many places on the planet, and to pave over it would be a travesty. But there's another resource that's vital to all of our human survival, and that is water. California's been suffering a drought, and we have been periodically. I just saw maps on the news today of the drought relief that we got from this epic storm recently, and it really didn't change the drought status of our area at all. And so I think it's really critical to think about if you're building a lot of new homes and bringing in a lot of businesses, how much water is that of businesses, how much water is that going to take from Bariessa, which is a good source. But the farmers and the residents who are here right now really need that as a priority. If you have this wonderful soil, but not enough water to irrigate, how will you grow your crops? And when I was at the library with, with the Fairfield Forward Group a few weeks ago, there was mention that the city residents would take priority over the ag people, would be very competitive for water use. I think that's something that's very precious, that we need to be very, very thoughtful and be wise stewards over that resource.
Please conclude.
Okay. I would just say, let's, let's just slow down. There's no need to rush this through. Come up with a great fourth alternative and make Fairfield, without annexing any more land, make Fairfield a vibrant, interesting, beautiful place that businesses and people want to come to, just like they want to come to Sassoon Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craigan Rutherford to be followed by Ron Lanza.
Good evening. I'm Craigan Rutherford. I too am a resident of Thomason Lane, which is proposed to be used in all three alternatives. You've heard from a few of my neighbors. We've heard a lot of agricultural land and water and things like that. But I come with maybe a different perspective. I would like to see Fairfield become a place that all residents can be proud of. Right now, when I drive down West Texas, North Texas, around the mall, that's not an area that I, as a resident of Fairfield, am proud of. And I'd hate to see that type of development, you know, pop up in my neighborhood around my house, around things that I have to see and look at. I'm sure at one time, it was a vibrant, beautiful community in that area, but it is not now. Much like the tennis courts, I ask, what happened? How did they go from beautiful tennis courts to what it is now? I think that issue needs to be addressed and resolved before we talk about expanding outside into the agricultural lands that we're talking about. Also, the affordable housing, and I ask affordable for who? Who's going to be able to live in, you know, Sassoon Valley, Thomason Lane, and afford the high-density, medium-density housing that's proposed to be built there? Again, I think it'd be more affordable and more logical to be placed in downtown Fairfield, near the mall, kind of rebuild up that area and get that functioning more properly. And I just thank you for your time and your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Ron Lanza, to be followed by Dorothy Hawks.
Good evening, Ron Lanza, president of Sassoon Valley Vintners and Growers Association. And as you might imagine, based on the commentary tonight, we, as a board, strongly oppose, reject any of the current alternatives that are proposed, and any future annexation within Sassoon Valley. Approximately 19 years ago, the city council worked with the Sonno Irrigation District to come up with something called the Sassoon Valley Fund. That fund was the catalyst behind the Vintners and Growers Association. And the idea was to promote the valley and make it financially sustainable. And we are well on our way in doing that. And along with the county, the Sassoon Valley Strategic Plan that works really well, just let that happen. And we'll take care of Sassoon Valley. It's going in the right direction. And it's great to see Jan here. My father, along with Jan's support, we got Sassoon Valley AVA in 1982. Next year will be the 40th anniversary. So we're doing fine. Thank you.
Dorothy Hawks to be followed by Sean Favaro.
Good evening. I'll try to be very brief. I, I started taking the survey, I took the survey last week. And I just want to say, first of all, that I, it was, it was overwhelming. Just taking the survey, it was like, wait a minute, there's just too much stuff here. It took a long time to try to figure out what the maps were. And I have to say, by the end of the survey, I was probably not doing a good job of being very thorough about it. So the idea of just taking a pause and sort of redirecting, when I looked at those alternatives, my feeling was, where did they come from? I've lived in this community for 50 years, or almost 50 years. And they just didn't, I couldn't relate to them. So please, take a pause and give more direction to what the alternative should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Next speaker, Sean Favaro, to be followed by Raymond Erickson.
Good evening. I'm Sean Favaro. I'm the president of the Solano County Farm Bureau. And as has been said tonight, agriculture is a big thing in Solano County and particularly in Sassoon. We obviously, we're an economic engine, right? We provide taxes, jobs. And we've always understood that there is the need to grow. But we expect that, or we hope that that will happen within before we start going out into ag lands. And there's obviously already been some, some comments made, some possibilities as to how we can do that. The ag land also has a value beyond just out of production, as has been said tonight as well. And that is something that's important to, to realize as well. An agrarhood is not going to fulfill what we have out there currently. We would just like to remind everyone that we should always treat ag land as if it's important, because it is. Food, right? The beauty. And just being in touch with, with the land. And so with that, I will conclude my time and just encourage that we do slow down, that we think about a little more about what we're doing, and that we reach out to some of the agricultural communities, specifically groups like my own, so that we can give you some feedback as well on that front. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raymond Erickson to be followed by Victoria Erickson.
I guess somebody put my name in there. Okay, everybody pretty much knows who I am, what I do, and how long I've been doing it. We're on Cordelia Road and Thomason Road. And you know, I think, in a nutshell, are you guys going to vote on anything tonight? These workshops are something I would like to be involved in, and the landowner meetings. So is there a way we can get in contact and find out how that happens? Because I think that's where the real input's going to come in at.
Well, your being here tonight makes a big difference, too. So, thank you.
Yeah. And the other thing is, we've got an area that's ag, that's productive, and we'd like to continue to be a productive part of the community. I don't have any big businesses, but we got two of them and one seasonal business. And they're doing good. It would be a benefit for everybody in the community that we stay in business. I guess that puts it all in the, I got 43 seconds left.
Next is Victoria Erickson to be followed by Linda Tenbrink.
Well, my name's Victoria, and that was my husband. I'm Victoria Erickson. My husband is Raymond, who you just heard from. His family's been in Sassoon Valley for over 100 years, since 1920. He's a third-generation farmer, and our son Ross is going to be the fourth-generation farmer. We attended the Planning Commission meeting last week to express our feelings and thoughts on the Fairfield Forward 2050, which seems to be another name for the general plan, which we didn't realize that. This plan was not expressed to those of us in Sassoon Valley that are most impacted by these changes. Word is spread, and agriculture community is here to protect what we have developed over the generations. It's unfortunate that those that are making these changes have not taken the time to include those of us that are most affected by these changes. Both sides of Sassoon Valley, either side of Highway 80, are an area that many may never have. It has taken many years to develop. Its beauty and attraction to the public can be quickly removed with the development of high-impact housing and industrial changes. Please address the impact of traffic and schools as well. My question to those that develop and prove these changes, are they aware of the livelihoods that can be, that will be stopped, and the beauty that may have been provided will no longer be available to the producers as well as the public? High-density housing will take away from the life their children crave. The public so enjoys speaking to the owners and creators of the products we all make. These changes proposed will remove that from not only us, but also from the public. My concern is also the speed with which this plan has been completed without the input of Sassoon Valley on the east side of Highway 80. Despite COVID, there is not a reason this information was not imparted to those most impacted. Can the city of Fairfield not focus on the development of the, can the city of Fairfield please focus on the interior of Fairfield, which is needed desperately, and not expand the beauty of the ag land? My suggestion would be to slow down this process and take from the three plans and create one that includes the input of all, all of us impacted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Tenbrink to be followed by Lisa Howard.
Thank you for hearing my comments. Obviously, I would like you to pause and consider a fourth alternative. There's a lot of cards that you're all looking at, a lot of different pieces that need to be coordinated. The main piece is, please, remove from your eyesight any development in Sassoon Valley. I want to tell you a very personal story. When, I'm not a multi, we weren't handed a farm from our parents. We started farming in Sassoon Valley on our own. So we have a little different story. And there is still room for new farmers to come into Sassoon Valley. It doesn't always just get handed down from generation to generation. There is still room for new farmers to come in, as long as the land is still there. So I'd like to put that out there also. The personal story that I want to give you is when I was at the fruit stand, you know the Pioneer Fruit Stand?
No.
Okay. Well, we used to own it. And as a fruit stand, similar to Larry's Fruit Stand. And one day, this young couple came in and they said, "We're on our honeymoon from Washington, DC, and we have a question for you." What are they harvesting up the road? They're small and they're red. And, and I said, okay. And it was late August, early September at this point. And I said, "Well, they're not cherries." Okay. And I'm thinking, racking my head, and the girl says, "They're radishes, right?" And I said, "Did you, did you just tell me they were picking from a tree?" She goes, "Yes, they're picking these red things from a tree." And I said, "Well, then, no, they're not radishes." She goes, "Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. They must be cranberries." And I said, "No, they're not cranberries either. Cranberries grow in a bush and not generally in this area." She goes, I said, "You know what? I know what the, before you go further, I know what they are. They're prunes." "Oh, no, they're not prunes. Prunes are black." I said, "No, prunes, before they are dried, are red. They're definitely prunes." The point that I bring up this story is, they were so far removed from agriculture that they thought radishes were being picked from a tree, okay? Or cranberries, and didn't know prunes were what they are first. I think the plans that you are looking at before you show the same ignorance and the same separation of agriculture. And I ask you to spend some time educating yourselves. Thank you.
Lisa Howard to be followed by Allison Bolton.
And Linda, thank you very much for the heirloom tomatoes, which gave us a tomato festival. Thank you, ma'am. Please.
Vicki Erickson said that was her husband. That was my mom. Shock, frustration, distrust. Those are the words that came to mind when I first saw this plan. How could the city of Fairfield think that developing in Sassoon Valley was the direction they wanted to go? I know the city of Fairfield better than that. I know you guys better than that. Something must have happened to lead these consultants in the wrong direction. You have an opportunity now to fix that problem. You've heard from your residents. You've heard from your landowners that own the land that you're trying to annex. You've heard from your survey takers. Nobody wants this. Nobody wants this. Get rid of the plan that doesn't work. Do not annex Sassoon Valley. Like Ron Lanza said, we're taking care of Sassoon Valley. It's thriving. We are attracting world-class businesses to grow grapes, make wine in this valley, and it is something special. Don't ruin it for us. Don't take it away from us. Take the time instead. All these people here, they're proud of Sassoon Valley. Take the time instead to focus your energy, your money, and developers within the city of Fairfield, so you can have the same passion we do about our land. When people come to my business, they ask me, "Where can I go have lunch?" And I kind of rack my brain. Where can I send them that I feel meshes with my clients in Sassoon Valley? I don't want it that way. I want to send them down to a thriving downtown. I want to send them to a hotel that they can be proud to be in and not worry their car's going to get broken into. You can choose to bridge the gap between the city of Fairfield and Sassoon by putting houses on a map, or you can bridge the gap by creating partnerships between what we're doing and what you need to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison Bolton to be followed by Amber Burke.
Hi. I, like many people here, I'm a property owner. I'm with some friends who are ag owners. And I was here three weeks ago for the Planning Commission meeting. And I was very distraught, very distraught. You know, I'm in the Green Valley area. We're going to have landmarks here. And I'm watching Amazon being built. I lost my view. I totally lost my view with the gray walls that are going up. I don't know. Has anybody seen them? Okay. Terrible. I didn't move here to lose my view. I didn't move here 20 years ago to not be able to go out to the country and enjoy the country. That's why I moved here. I didn't move here to be in the middle of the city. And there's a lot of people who did not know any of this is going on. I just happened to have learned about it four weeks ago. Why didn't I get a survey? How many people in this room right now got a survey? Yeah, but how many got an, how many were sent a notice that you were to do a survey? How many, anybody got a raised hand? No, none of us. Isn't that something? So when you talk about 38% of how many people did that survey, you don't tell us how many people you surveyed. 400 people? Where do they live?
All landowners.
All landowners? Didn't even know that. Okay, so I'm distraught still. I am. You know, it concerns me. It's just like the commercial building on the corner of Sassoon Valley Road and Business Center Drive that is zoned Center Drive that is zoned only for commercial land.
And would you conclude, please?
I will.
Thank you.
So I'll wind it up with this. These people came in and built what they told you was supposed to be offices and came in here and said, "No, we're building apartments." So who is misleading who and trying to get away with it? We got slowed down. They already built their swimming pool. You can see it. They're not supposed to be building anything yet. How come they're building anything? How did they get away with this? What are you doing for us? We didn't approve this. Thank you.
Amber Burke, to be followed by Barbara Davidson.
Hi, everyone. I'm a little bit different than a lot of people, although I'm a resident here, I have a completely different slant. So I am a freelance journalist, and one of the things that I do is I work with Sassoon Valley wine growers, and I also work with Visit Fairfield. And I help to bring in my colleagues, which are all world-class wine writers and travel experts, to Fairfield, okay? I can't even tell you how special what's happening in Sassoon Valley is right now. The wine is becoming world-class, incredible wines that I personally am proud to promote. When my colleagues have come to Fairfield and seen what we have going in Sassoon Valley, they are all so impressed. You know, we are creating something super special. We're talking about all the events that the wineries do that bring thousands of visitors here, that make us a destination. But our beauty and our rustic nation, nature and our community, those things are all served by this beautiful agricultural land. How special is Larry's produce to our community? That's all there. People go there. They buy their Christmas trees. They buy their pumpkins. All of that stuff is so important to us all. And when I'm promoting Fairfield and I'm promoting Sassoon Valley, those are things that I say are olive oil. It's so incredible, right? It's so unique. How can anybody even think about this? I'm asking you to put a pause here, to reevaluate, to look at what our community actually needs. This is not what we need. We need to be redeveloping our downtown area. We need to be making a better place to live, where we can all live in harmony and we can all appreciate the beauty and the nature that we currently have.
Please conclude.
Well, I just want to conclude with, have we thought about the changing work, things that we have? My husband has gone from being in an office to now working from home, as many tech people. They're coming to these agricultural places. They're moving all over the country. Do we really need businesses to come and bring skyscrapers here? Or do we need to have a place where people can live and enjoy their lives? That's my thing. Thank you so much.
And following this speaker, we'll take a five-minute break, please.
Thank you very much. I want to give you just a little bit of why I'm here. My husband and I lived in San Lorenzo, California for 50-plus years. And my daughter was looking for a place in the country, always wanted land. And she looked at a beautiful place that had five acres. And she said, "Well, Mom, you could fix up the house and rent it to one of the students from Solano College." And I went to this piece of property and I went out on the deck. And I tell you, I could sit there all day and just do nothing. It's so beautiful. We look down on pasture land. We're right off of Rockville, Rockville Road. And my comments may sound a little bit personal, but I really think Fairfield is a cute little town. It needs to be cleaned up. The homeless problem is going to be with us for a while, but we need to resolve that as well. And this survey that was taken, I'd like to know if we could have a sign-up sheet. Let people that would like to voice their opinion, that you could tally, maybe some kind of a sign-up sheet that we could all take part in. Anyway, please leave Sassoon Valley, ag lands and the homes alone for the future of our children and our families. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Price, disappointed, personal privilege. I meant to say this when I got forward. I wanted to thank having a city worker here, making sure that it's clean for us because of COVID. And I wanted to have on you.
Wendy Hamilton, and she'll be followed by Marilyn Farley.
Wendy Hamilton, former city council member and retired executive director of the Solano Land Trust. Thank you for listening to all of us. I was studying the alternatives and the visioning that the, that was done in the community. And what the results were, our residents admire our central location that encompasses green spaces. They most want the city to create jobs, to preserve agriculture, to improve parks and services, to provide affordable housing. This is what your own survey says. They want the new housing to be downtown, along major streets, in existing neighborhoods. Facebook, things like that, that's how I found out about this whole thing and showed up here. On the good side, I would say you have welcomed a sleeping giant, and congratulations for that, because I think all of us who have never been here, and our new faces to you, we're here to protect what we have and to give direction as well. We want to be collaborative, we want to have discussions, and we want to be part of the decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marilyn Farley, to be followed by, I think it's Annalise Shonful? Sorry.
Mayor and Council, Marilyn Farley, former city council member and retired executive director of the Solano Land Trust. Thank you for listening to all of us. I was studying the alternatives and the visioning that was done in the community. And what the results were, that our residents admire our central location that encompasses green spaces. They most want the city to create jobs, to preserve agriculture, to improve parks and services, to provide affordable housing. This is what your own survey says. They want the new housing to be downtown, along major streets, in existing neighborhoods, and near the train station. Nobody said, "Urbanize the Sussoon Valley." Where did that come from? And what I recall is the consultant saying, "The decision-makers. The decision-makers told us, please create a link between Fairfield and Cordelia." And I think that has led to this monstrosity. I hope this isn't what you really all wanted. I hope what you wanted is something more akin to what you're hearing tonight from this crowd. Preserve the Sussoon Valley. There isn't a single alternative that preserves the Sussoon Valley. And we also don't have a single alternative that maximizes the infill potential. Alternative one has no infill. Alternative two and three cherry pick different places and different intensities, rather than saying, "This is the composite total of what we could do within the existing city limits." Fairfield has a land area close to equivalent to San Francisco with about 20% of its population. And within, we can afford to intensify our development and create a city that our young people, for example, want to live in, because there are people here that create enough venues and interesting things for them to do, that they don't want to move away. And I think that's what we want. We want a community again. When I first moved here, we were a community, and we've become a group of commuters. And I think that's a really sad commentary. Your, this council has the opportunity to create a new vision and to change that and to try to make the city whole again and deal with the issues that people have mentioned.
Marilyn, would you conclude, please?
Yes, I am planning to.
Thank you.
I hope that we'll focus on making the central city a vibrant place and one that has regional demand and desire because of the Sussoon Valley.
Thank you.
Annalise, and then to be followed by Nicholas Valiff.
Hi, everyone, and thanks for being here. I want to actually say thank you, because you have brought our rural community together in something that they're passionate about. I'm a landowner, a small business owner, I lived in Sussoon Valley for over 35 years. My in-laws grew up there, and my son, or my husband grew up there as well. I'm passionate about that valley. We love it, and you guys love it too, I know. I was passionate about it as I fought for our little school, Sussoon Valley School, to stay open, and not only that, but to grow and celebrate our agricultural heritage. We built that garden in the school for the very reason that most kids, like Linda said, didn't know where their food came from. They were so detached from it. I heard kids say, "I've never even seen an artichoke." So guess what? We planted them. And we taught them to harvest them and use the tomatoes from the garden to make tomato sauce and to make things from the land. It is a precious resource, I know you all know that. I only learned about this meeting from my neighbors and from social media. I didn't know this was going on. We live out in the unincorporated area, and we feel like we don't have a lot of say in what goes on, because we are in our own little valley. And the city does things, and we don't hear about it. So I'm really happy to be here and be able to speak to you on behalf of our valley. It is a precious resource, we love it. The people that live there are amazing. Use them as partners, please partner up with people. And you need to focus on what is here and what is great already. West Texas should be a jewel. It's adorable with the little sign. It should be developed in a way that makes it a destination, much like Sussoon Valley has become a destination. So take the lead from Sussoon Valley and the people that have worked hard to create this environment, and take that into the town and refurbish it. Make it a place where people want to come, as they want to come to Sussoon Valley. Don't pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Thank you so much.
Nicholas Valiff, to be followed by Haley Hicken.
Good evening, thank you, everybody. My name is Nicholas Valiff, I'm here on behalf of the Camas Cordelia Winery and Camas Vineyards. And it's our interest in maintaining and preserving the ag lands around the Sussoon Valley. We would like to see additional green spaces and provide, I'm sorry, and we would be interested in exploring a fourth option that promotes the local agricultural community. We welcome the exploration of alternative transportation methods closer to the existing infrastructure, with the ability to have shuttles around the Sussoon Valley wine area to promote the ag tourism. We would like to see additional winery developments to promote the region on the south side of I-80. Our hope is to draw additional visitors by allowing boutique hotels, restaurants, and promoting the heart of Fairfield, as everybody spoke about here tonight. We are concerned with any additional public receptors and encroachment into our ag lands around our facility. And it is our position that the Sussoon Valley needs to be protected and the ag lands be protected as well, and learn lessons from what isn't working in the neighboring Napa and Sonoma counties, and let's not repeat those mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next Haley Hicken, to be followed by Esther Pryor.
I've never done this before, but I felt compelled to come talk, because I, we bought our house in Green Valley in 2017, and I'm already seeing huge apartments being built right now, right, like everyone said, by the freeway, and it's kind of an eyesore, and to add high-density housing over there is just going to burden the roads that are very crowded already, I'm sure you've heard that. We only have one grocery store. I know you said something about, well, there needs to be enough population to support more, but I think that it's already there. All we have is a Safeway and Costco. So, you know, I think that focusing on improving housing downtown or around the mall, and I haven't heard anyone say anything, but I have three little kids at home, and I don't see anything about, like, new schools being added to where all the kids who move into these housings going to go, if it's built. All the schools in our area, I've heard, are full. I mean, I got the letter when we moved in, that you might not get a space in the school, even though you own your house there, because all the schools are full. So I don't know if that's part of the plan, to build more schools for the kids, or whoever is moving into those places, it's not going to be only, you know, retirees. So I think it's, like, short-sighted to just throw in housing and not think about the roads and the stores and the schools and all the other things. And you obviously agree with all the other stuff about, you know, it's an agricultural area and it should probably remain that way for the most part. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Esther Pryor, to be followed by Derek Lum.
Good evening, my name is Esther Pryor. Last week, I recounted to the Planning Commission how I had witnessed ag land, small farms, and orchards disappear in Walnut Creek and Concord, and similar scenarios in Danville and Pleasant Hill. And I am fearful that Solano County and the city of Fairfield are on the verge of making the same mistakes regarding agricultural land, as did Contra Costa County. The proposal for development from I-80 north to Rockville Road would be the start of encroachment on Sussoon Valley. The proposal for urban development in the Rockville area would bring thousands of vehicles to Sussoon Valley Road. The preferred plan for Fairfield Forward should have no expansion of the city of Fairfield into the rural areas of the county. This would adhere to the sentiment of what is rural should remain rural, which is a part of the philosophy of the voter-approved Urban Limit Line. City Council must reject the proposed development of land from I-80 north to Rockville Road and I-80 south. Development of the Rockville area would be the beginning of the destruction of Sussoon Valley. We must have a plan that includes agricultural protection, particularly Sussoon Valley. The plan should emphasize the use of infill within existing city neighborhoods by developing underutilized and vacant lots. Develop the heart of Fairfield and make Fairfield a vibrant city. I hope your decisions will make Fairfield Forward on the right track. Thank you.
Derek Lum, excuse me, to be followed by Tracy Ellison.
Good evening, Mayor Price, city council members. My name is Derek Lum. I'm a member of the Lum Family Farms and applicant for a new Sussoon Valley winery named E&amp;C Winery. E stands for my uncle, Ed Lum, and C stands for my father, Charles Lum. The Lum family has been farming in Sussoon Valley for over 100 years. I am the third-generation Lum farmer, and there is a fourth behind me. In 2001, 20 years ago, the Sussoon Valley Ag Advisory Committee was formed through a joint collaboration between the Solano Irrigation District and the city of Fairfield. For a period of 10 years, SID and Fairfield invested money to bolster and promote agriculture in Sussoon Valley. Larry Belestra of Larry's Produce, Ron Lanza of Wooden Valley Winery, and I were some of the first committee members to develop the agricultural vision of Sussoon Valley 20 years ago. In 2011, the Sussoon Valley Strategic Plan was adopted. The vision of Sussoon Valley Strategic Plan is to preserve the agricultural heritage of Solano County while providing the economic engine for the farmers, like the Lum family. Because of the Strategic Plan, Sussoon Valley has became able to attract notable winemakers like Chuck Wagner of Camas, existing wineries like the Lanza's of Wooden Valley, the Anselmo's of Backroads are growing. Recent arrivals like Joe Cassidy of Bali Keel, Danny Chang in the Village 360, and medic ambulance owners who purchased the Ice House at Rockville Corner see the positive advantage of entering Sussoon Valley. Our family will soon be presenting a winery application to follow in the leadership of the winemakers I just mentioned. E&amp;C Winery will grow with the Sussoon Valley Strategic Plan and hope that the city of Fairfield would also support the vision of the Strategic Plan. The Sussoon Valley Strategic Plan has taken hold, but needs the support and commitment from all of Solano County citizens. Support the Sussoon Valley Strategic Plan. Support agriculture. Support E&amp;C Winery. In closing, a fourth plan should be done with landowners and stakeholders of all Sussoon Valley involvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Ellison, to be followed by Carla Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name's Tracy Ellison. I have resided in the Fairfield-Sussoon area for 22 years. I currently live in Rio Vista, and my job does depend on ag, and it has for 16 years of living in this county. I'm going to be succinct in a couple of ideas or information that hasn't been brought up before. Has, can I ask the council to ask in time, has there been a consideration to learn more through the State of California Strategic Growth Council and their program for Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program? The state has upwards of $780 million to help with cities to do planning, outreach, education, and potential projects that talk about infill and local transportation, at the same time having a funding opportunity to do ag land protection on the edges of urban cities. And this does talk about vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions and working through that program. Secondarily, I'd like to talk about Food Shed. COVID happened, and Sussoon Valley jumped right to it, helping your residents and helping local residents. The Timbricks donated, Wilkinson, Erickson Ranch, we even saw Larry's Produce morph into offer produce boxes, and that really supported this community that you're trying to build and other local communities. So we have to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carla Nelson, to be followed by Michelle Valine.
I'm not a rancher, not a farmer, not a grape grower. I do live in Sussoon Valley. My husband is a winemaker. We get our fruit from Sussoon Valley exclusively, and I would put it up against Napa fruit any day of the year. We live on Wallata, I bring that up only because on these maps they keep showing, they show this adorable little white icon of a Gomer school in my backyard, yet it hasn't been mentioned. So that's a little concerning to us as well. My opinion is, yes, develop downtown, yes, develop North Texas, and yes, develop the Solano Town Center. Those places are already on cement, you're not going to be stealing ag land, prime ag land, from the farmers and the ranchers and the grape growers. Please do not destroy our beautiful prime land. Finally, I would respectfully ask not to use the term "agra hood." I don't know any of the farmers, ranchers, grape growers, winemakers that want a hood on their property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Valine, to be followed by Trudy and Jim Weans or Wiens.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Michelle Valine. Couple of you I already know. I have lived in Sussoon Valley for 60 years, effective last Wednesday, my birthday. I first want to thank you for holding the reunion of Sussoon Valley Ag and Agon Ball in a few, because a lot of these people I haven't seen in a while. My first point of question would be when the young lady that spoke said that people, landowners, were interviewed. I would like to ask, when and whom? Because I came tonight with a good friend for a lifetime, Larry Belestra, and neither one of us were asked or interviewed, yet my property sits right along both sides of the Parkway corridor and is either directly affected or in the sphere of influence. So, you know, statistics are great, but until you get to what's behind it. I could tell you I was reserve role champion, that sounds great, but in a class of two, it's not that big of a deal. Then the other thing, and I not, don't mean to be a naysayer, but when you say, oh, there's no eminent domain planned, let me tell you, I personally have probably been affected by eminent domain more than anybody in this county. They took 11 acres for the westbound truck, or eastbound truck scales, they took 10 acres for the Sussoon Valley Parkway, and as of January 1st, I will be being approached for them to take the 20 acres where my home sits. But we roll with the flow. That's why people like the Lanza's and the Belestras and the Timbricks, you know, and the Lums are still here. However, me and my jovial naivety thought, well, I'll build on the 42 acres I have left till I was informed about this. And you're kind of, well, there goes that, I maybe ought to have a second thought. So I really think the best course of action is to take a step back. Because if you run a very large, complex menu by you all at once, you're liable to miss the poisonous pill. And it's not just one, or two, or four points of the plan, it's all of them and how they all interact.
And would you please conclude?
I will. And it needs to be looked at thoughtfully and in a lack of haste. There is no cost to taking more time. There is a huge cost if you make a bad decision. But I want to thank all of you for the time to speak. It is important to us that have been here a long time, as well as people who enjoy the valley. I think, I don't envy your position, long-term planning is not an easy thing to do when you have to take everything into effect. But I think you've heard tonight that those of us in Sussoon Valley would like you to keep your hands off our valley.
Thank you.
Trudy and Jim. Are they still here? Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Delayed. I have to say that when I saw that, it's an atrocity, that Amazon deal. How, whose idea was that, to put it with housing? It's on Netzel and Mankels. I heard it was Amazon. Is it a substitution? And then we were all told, those were all office buildings, until, what, I don't know, two weeks ago, we found out they were homes. And that's an atrocity also. What an eyesore. Who I'm here for are the farmers and the people that are growing food, that have been here for at least 100 years or more. It broke my heart to see young Erickson from Ericson Farms last week, because I didn't know about this meeting. I was not, like, what was it, 400 people knew about it? It's kind of sneaky, and I feel betrayed. I want to know, who are the people, who are the decision-making people about this? Who's making the decisions?
Would you please, King Philip?
I'm done. I just would like to know who's making the decisions of taking all the land away and putting cement over it. When this, these people, it's their livelihood.
Ultimately, it'll be City Council.
Where do you get your demographics from?
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Cornelius Wood to be followed by Dwayne Crom.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, and fellow citizens, I had not intended to speak here at all this evening, but having heard most of this, I thought I would add some comments to it. I live in Fairfield. I got here in March of 1966 and have been here ever since. And the Sussun Valley of today is not the Sussun Valley of that time. It's changed a lot. And I'm here to support the folks who don't want to see much more change happen in it. I live in downtown Fairfield, and that's the area I want to see change. It's about to become a cesspool. And like that lady said before, when it does, the developers are going to buy it up and sell it to people at much higher prices. I would just as soon see you folks turn your attention inward and see that downtown Fairfield survives. Today, I drove up North Texas Street, and right by where the brand-new Fairfield Lone and Pawn is, in a housing shelter called a Fairfield Bus Stop, was probably about six or eight people living. I turned left onto Air Base Parkway, and on the right-hand side in the bushes there, there, I don't know how many people live in there, but there's enough stuff there for probably 10 families. That's all blight. I know the homeless are a problem, but we need to eliminate the blight, and you need to focus in on getting downtown Fairfield and the Ad Park, a good thing to happen in the future. Leave Sussun Valley alone. That's what I got to say about. Thank you.
Dwayne Crom, and then I don't have any more speaker cards, but there are some people holding on Zoom apparently.
Good evening. One night for you guys. It's hard work. So, Dwayne Crom, resident of Fairfield, and most recently, a neighbor again of Januets. We, Marilyn and I moved to Paradise Valley Estates. We're now in the retirement community. I'd like to talk to you about endgame process. I think I can see tonight, you guys, it's pretty clear what the community wants, and I imagine you'll go along with it. So, Monica said, Monica Brown said earlier, a general plan's a once-in-a-lifetime. This is actually my third one. Yeah. So I was on with Carlin Lewis, where I met Carlin, on the Vision 2020 Open Space Task Force for Fairfield's last general plan update. On the county general plan update with, which ended up with Major T, I appointed Ron Lanza to be on the Citizens Advisory Committee for that general plan update process. And now, we've been working through as citizen activists on this process. The thing that I think is different here is, I think, as you've heard a lot tonight, the folks feeling less involved than they were in the other two processes that I mentioned. In the Vision 2020 process, there were hundreds of people, here I am sure you remember, hundreds and hundreds of people involved in multiple task forces over several years that eventually became a plan that came to the City Council fully fleshed out with all of the details, because it had been incredibly vetted by, again, these hundreds of citizens. In the county general plan process, also the GPAC, the General Plan Advisory Group, had dozens of meetings over a year or two, as I recall, maybe three, and again presented to the Planning Commission and eventually to the Board of Supervisors, a fully fleshed out plan that was eventually approved by the voters of Solano County, Major T. And it was overwhelmingly approved, well over 70%. The other election I'll just briefly mention is the Pacific Flyway Center. I think, as most of you know, the Orderly Growth Committee worked closely with city staff and with Pacific Flyway Center advocates, and we jointly came together and said, here's how to work out the problems, and brought that forward, and it became, what, 75% in favor of the Pacific Flyway Center? So it was a process that involved people early, a widespread engagement process to get voters involved, and I would encourage you, at the end of the day, to think about doing something similar to engage the valley farmers who are passionate. Engage them big time in terms of putting something finally together that, let's hope we can take it to the voters and say, this is the protection of Sussun Valley, this is putting Fairfield's efforts downtown as everybody wants and the center part of the city, and put it in front of the voters, and then I think you'll get a rousing round of applause with a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, are there any people still waiting on Zoom?
Yes, Madam Clerk, we do have some speakers on Zoom, and I'll go ahead and let the first speaker in.
Thank you.
One moment. Okay, and our first speaker will be Mike Zeiss, and you have two minutes, and feel free to unmute.
Thank you. Borrowed landscape, I love that phrase from one of the previous speakers. And it's not just Mount Fuji, it's also Sussun Valley. I'm a homeowner in Sussun City. In other words, I'm your neighbor. The decisions you make tonight affect not only Fairfield, but also your neighbors. As your neighbor, I'm asking you to protect farmland in Sussun Valley. Sussun Valley farms provide all of us with produce, wine, and yes, beauty. It's our borrowed landscape. But more than that, the farmland plays a major role in protecting our climate. One of your five goals is, quote, "promoting climate resilience and reducing greenhouse gas emissions," close quote. Thank you for that. Reducing greenhouse gases will help your neighbors as well as Fairfield. I want to read you a quote from the Climate Action Plan of your neighbor to the north, Yolo County. Quote, "Each acre of agriculture and open space conserved saves nearly 100 times the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that would result if the land were converted to urban use," close quote. Again, that calculation is from your neighbor, Yolo County. Saving 100 times the greenhouse gases, gosh, to achieve your climate goals, probably the single most important thing you can do is preserve Sussun Valley agriculture. In summary, when you act locally, please think globally. Protect the quality of life and climate for yourselves and your neighbor. Say no to urban development within Sussun City. And to echo a previous speaker, develop the heart of Fairfield and make Fairfield a vibrant city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is a phone number ending in 122. Feel free to go ahead and unmute using star six.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, Council members. My name is John Calliden. My wife and I are five-plus-year residents of Fairfield. We live approximately one mile away from the heart of Sussun Valley. We are homeowners, and we proudly tell everyone we live amidst Sussun Valley rustic wine country, one of the first American viticultural areas in the state of California. Sussun Valley is home to world-class wines, homegrown farm products, and a beautiful agricultural landscape. Neighbors and visitors come from both near and far to experience this rustic wine country. There is a Sussun Valley master plan, as you've heard tonight, to maintain and grow the agricultural and viticultural businesses of Sussun Valley. In no way is the plan one that develops Sussun Valley into single-family housing or apartment complexes, office parks, strip malls. Sussun Valley stands on the cusp of greatness in the world of high-quality wines, winery tourism, agritourism experiences. Every winery is upping their game with newer renovated tasting rooms, heavy investment in wine production facilities, and banding together for the greater good of all agricultural and viticultural businesses in the area. Tearing apart the landscape of the Sussun Valley countryside destroys the very thing that draws people here. Agritourism and viticultural tourism are diametrically opposed to urban development. I object to developments in Sussun Valley rustic wine country. I object to housing developments, apartment complexes, office parks, shopping malls, or strip malls. Instead of running away from the problems of the city to start anew, look within the city of Fairfield proper. Improve the existing city of Fairfield. Do not encroach on or annex neighboring communities and cities. Instead, focus on Fairfield's homeless problem, crime in unsafe areas, blighted areas, much long-overdue renovation of historic downtown, and develop affordable housing in the city proper by infilling the city. Lastly, keep Sussun Valley rustic wine country. Reject all of the plans. Do not expand city limits. And I would ask the council members to simply take a look over their shoulder at the upper left-hand quadrant and tell me what you see. It's what the tourists and locals want to see when they visit Sussun Valley. It's the farms and the vineyards, the mountains and the fields. We must not destroy that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and our next speaker is Stephanie Fox, and you have two minutes, and feel free to unmute. Yeah, and are you there, Stephanie? Feel free to unmute. Okay, and what we'll do is, we'll go ahead and move on to Bob Berman, and Bob, feel free to go ahead and unmute.
Hello. My name is Bob Berman. I did write a letter to the city that I hope you all had a chance to review, and basically, the bottom line, I don't want to, I don't want to repeat much of what's been already said tonight, but the bottom line was, I suggested that there is the development of an additional alternative that provides protection of agricultural lands both north and south of I-80. This would mean no urban development on the land between I-80 and Rockville Road, and no development on agricultural lands south of I-80. But I also wanted to note, and I'm disappointed, that city staff has not noted that the council received a letter from Terry Schmidtbauer, who is the Director of Resource Management of Solano County. And in his letter, he says, "The county has concerns that each of the alternatives proposed involves urban intrusion into portions of the Sussun Valley that conflict with the county's general plan and specifically the county's strategic plan for the area. The county has significant investment in furthering agriculture and agriculture tourism in the Sussun Valley and would like to see any land use alternatives developed respect the county plans for the valley. The county recommends an alternative development that minimizes or eliminates any expansion of urban uses in the Sussun Valley that conflicts with the strategic plan." In addition, Terry says he would like to see direct discussions with Solano County. It is highly, in addition to those discussions, he recommends it is highly advised that the city hold one or more outreach meetings with agriculture interests and other groups in the Sussun Valley to discuss plan alternatives and receive direct input from stakeholders in the area. We believe that such outreach would assist city staff in understanding the issues of importance." So that is from the county Director of Resource Management, and I would ask, have these discussions been started, or what was, what is the plan to have the types of discussions requested by Solano County? Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, and our next speaker, Stephanie Fox, has returned, so we'll go ahead and, Stephanie, feel free to unmute your microphone, and you are on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Stephanie Fox, and I live in Green Valley, and I wanted to just echo that I also agree that annexation of the Sussun Valley is not an acceptable option. The other thing I just wanted to make sure to put for the record is that actually, also, the plans do really not actually meet anything in the stakeholder interview summary on your website. The only mention of this connecting Cordelia to Fairfield is from developers in one sentence, and then that North Bay Healthcare mentioned that they wanted apartments by their Green Valley area. So I just am not thinking that, you know, those two entities outweigh all of the other stakeholders that you interviewed that didn't say anything about Sussun or Green Valley or Cordelia area. And I also wanted to mention, not only taking away the farmland that's not really in line with any of the city's goals, but also development in that Green Valley-Cordelia area, even in the non-agricultural parts, per the plan, really has concerns for safety. There's only one entrance onto the highway going westbound, and that has, you know, in many of the other meetings, lots of discussion about horrible traffic. And in addition to that, there's already a huge apartment building being built that, and this proposed, I guess, I don't know, Amazon warehouse, there's definitely a huge warehouse there. So I don't think that the current plans take into account any of that already happening development. So we would lack the infrastructure to make this feasible, any of these plans feasible. In addition, you know, I'm a child advocate, and the schools in the area are already full. And like I said, already, we're having more apartments built that those children will have nowhere to go. And also, as I think a few people have mentioned, the housing that's being built there is not affordable housing, and so is not actually in line with the goals. I do think there was talk about mixed use in, you know, the shareholder summary, particularly near, more housing near Travis Air Force Base. Yes. But again, nothing about needing more homes or apartments in the Green Valley-Cordelia area. So I just would like, again, to pause this and have the whole thing reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and our next speaker is Mary Pearson, and Mary, feel free to unmute.
Well, hello, everybody, and thank you for sitting around this very long meeting tonight. I've been listening all night. My family is Pearson's clients. My parents got married in 1950 in Vallejo, so we have been in Solano County a very, very long time. Pearson's was started in 1954. We built out in Cordelia, and everybody thought it was crazy. Who's going to drive that far? They bought the property in Rockville in 1960, and I bought the property next door. We have four houses that back up to Rockville Park. I see many, many of my neighbors there and friends from the valley. Guys, you know what, when driving up, I used to, God, 10 minutes into town, you're in town, but you're in the country. Please keep it this way. The traffic is already crazy. I walk with Dad, who's 91, every day, two miles up and down our road. We go up to the corner towards the park, and the people are coming 60, 70 miles out of the valley. You put more on Sussun You put more on Sassoon Valley, they're going to cut through Green Valley to skirt around it, right? It's crazy. When, you know, I got my license, started driving, loved driving through the orchards. When those first orchards started going down and we could see the highway, it was like, oh, no. Oh, no, they're coming our way. I'm just going to close with, I appreciate all of you guys who serve. It is a very difficult position to be in. Chuck, you guys have all been here, Kat, Pam, Mayor Price, I've served in the community. I serve right now with Community Action North Bay. We are working on massive plans to help with the homeless situation. I've been with the ambassadors for the Chamber of Commerce promoting Fairfield. We love our city, but we would love to retake Fairfield and make it what it used to be, where it was more of a destination. We're a bedroom community, and I don't see it ever changing. And if the pricing for housing keeps going out of control, it will never solve our housing problem for the low-income people who also want to live here in this beautiful place. Thanks, you guys. I appreciate you very much. Good to see all my neighbors there. Happy birthday, Michelle.
Thank you.
Yes, and our next speaker will be Dr. Bonnie Hamilton. And Dr. Hamilton, feel free to unmute your microphone.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, and fellow Fairfield residents. I have lived and practiced medicine in Fairfield for over 20 years. I have a vision, a vision for Fairfield. Imagine a vibrant city center with bustling cafes and restaurants, peoples of all ages, and all kinds congregating, living buildings with rooftop gardens, where our citizens live nearby, can walk safely, and can hop on a light rail train to take them from the west end of Texas Street to the far north end, where our shops and stores are revitalized with new beginnings, where our city center is walkable, breathable, and livable, with lots of shade structures in the form of trees and solar structures, and with drinking water dispensing stations, a city full of food forests and other foliage to attract pollinators, and where gray water is captured, where the heart of Fairfield becomes the soul of Fairfield. Our first priority should be to consider the impacts on our climate, on our health, and to guarantee that we and future generations have clean air, water, food, soil, transportation, and energy, a priority which guarantees a thriving earth with thriving people upon it. Our city needs to be self-powered with solar and have battery backup to provide energy security, independence, and resilience, instead of depending on dirty diesel backup generators. We need an infrastructure that allows for more electrification, such as electric vehicle charging stations. We need to preserve and protect our green spaces, including at our city borders, and support agriculture, agritourism, and reward regenerative farming practices. Instead of trying to drive forward while looking in the rearview mirror, we need to look ahead to the future, which is clean and green, not only for ourselves, but especially for our children and grandchildren. My vision for Fairfield is a fourth alternative. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have no further requests to speak at this time. Thank you.
We'll bring it back now for council discussions. Councilwoman Moy, please.
I loved hearing from all of the folks here tonight on the phone. I guess we probably should have said something before the, everybody spoke. I loved hearing you, but not one of us would do housing in Sassoon Valley. Not one of us said to do this. Not at all. Not at all. And I first even knew about this when I got a call from the Tin Brinks, and it shocked me, too. You see, my family is from Sassoon Valley. My grandparents were field workers. They worked for the Chadborns, finally, and Sassoon Valley looked different back then. They slept out on the ranches underneath the trees and other things until they could finally afford a place to live, which was inside Fairfield, which is very small then. And my father was also raised like that. So I know Sassoon Valley very well. My husband and I, my husband was born out there. My first job was cutting fruit for the lums. My most recent job out in Sassoon Valley was being the first person to ever work for Ilfiorello, which is the olive oil place out there. I set that place up. I would still probably be there, but I was struggling with cancer. So if anybody could look at me and say, to think for a minute, you know, for a minute, I mean, it's unbelievable. It's shocking. It all is. So here's what I'm thinking. First of all, of course, we need to slow the roll. Number two, we need to take another look at this consultant and see how we can adjust things and get more people involved. Now, you're one group of people with, you know, a real linear and understandable thought. This city is very diverse. We also need to talk to the people who live in the inner city. We also need to talk to people who live on the north end. We need to talk to citizens around us in Sassoon City and elsewhere. It has not, we have not done a good job. All right? This is the first time we're hearing, you know, sitting down like this. And sometimes I thought my head was going to explode because, you know, I just wanted to say, I agree, I agree, you know, we agree. So I think, of course, we need to slow the roll. We need to look at that and go back at the Vision 2020, which I thought was really good, and spend the time to reimagine that a little bit, so we can get the input and the buy-in. You know, Chuck and I, we sat on the Sassoon Valley Fund, too, along with the Lonzas and so on. So, you know, the bottom line is that I love you guys. I love Sassoon Valley more. There's a reason why. My father-in-law said, "That's God's country, and you will never, ever see something more beautiful." And, you know, it has sickened me over the years, just since I've been here, and I'm catching up with Michelle here at the end of the month, so I'll be 60, and to see some of the things that have gone on in the valley and in Green Valley. That was all farmland. Those were cherry trees up there. I, a lot of, and I've actually fought against that, but bottom line is I don't want to go rambling on anymore, but just to say this. And this is what I believe at this time, we used to cheer, Jill and I did when we were at Sassoon Valley School, S-U-I-S-U-N, Sassoon Valley wins again.
Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, thank you for that cheer, Catherine. First of all, I want to thank everybody who came out tonight. You know, and we, like Councilwoman Moy said, there's not one person on this council that wants to build out in Sassoon Valley. My wife was born out off Abernathy, first-generation American. Her parents worked on an orchard out there. We talked about this, actually, and, you know, first of all, I mean, there's no way, the misconception that we actually want to do this is crazy, because I know I never said it, and a lot of other people, plus she, you know, I know how mad she'd get, too, but that's besides the point. But, no, I really do think, though, that Sassoon Valley, and as Mr. Batson knows, who's there, I used to teach in the court schools before I went to Armio. I used to bring my kids, and these are the kids who got either close to getting expelled or expelled, out to the valley, to Rockville Park, and these are kids who are like 14, 15-years-old, who had never seen the valley before, because they're from inner-city Fairfield. And they'd come out and they'd go, "Mr. Vaccaro, you know, we don't even, we didn't even know this existed out here. So why would I or anybody else want to ruin that for kids that have a chance to go out there and be near agriculture? My grandkids are going to go to Sassoon Valley School. My grandson's going to be a kindergartner there next year." I mean, you know, I wouldn't want to ruin that for him either. So I don't think, you know, this is a plan that, obviously, we need to go back and take another look at and do a fourth alternative. I also think, though, that, and I agree with Catherine, too, that we do need to hear from the other people in the city, the people from the inner city, because, you know, we need to know what they want in the city. You know, there was one plan out there, I think one of the plans were a light rail from west Texas to north Texas, something like that. I mean, those are the ideas that, you know, really should come about. What can we do to promote that in the city itself? And I think if we really go back and take a look at that, and we bring not only people from here that want to be on this advisory committee, but people from within the city that want to be on this advisory committee, that's what we need. We need a good, you know, a cross of everybody here. But anyway, I just want to end by saying, I'm not going to go on either anymore, but I know, I'm sure I speak for everybody on this council, that it's not going to happen. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Tim, please.
Mayor, thank you. You know, it was nice to see people I haven't seen in a long time, also, too, people whose ancestors have streets named after them. I live in Green Valley. I've lived out there for about 20 years. One thing that everything taught me tonight was the value of information and what happens when we don't get out the correct information or we don't give out any information. And I think sometimes as council members, and this is not directed at staff, the consultant, I'll take the blame, whatever, is we're a very small dot, and we think we know everything that's going on, and we assume everybody else does. Then you draw a big circle around the dot, and that big, part of that big circle is the public. We started this about a year ago, I guess. I actually saw the plans, I think probably most of us did, probably two days before the Planning Commission brought it up, right? So now it comes to us. There's no way, my colleagues have said, "We're not going to make a decision tonight." And my guess is, I've been known to place a wager, over-under, six months, eight months, a year, I don't know, but you have very, very good information, you have very good reasoning why, understand that growth will occur. Now, we brought it into the city, and listening tonight, when everybody says, "Do the city, do the city," and the light bulb comes on, it's like, I'll bet, I don't know how many people here know, the 275-unit workforce housing apartment building under construction next to one lake off Vanden Road, right? It's under construction. Everybody goes, "Really?" Yeah. The 77-unit, low-income and very low-income and homeless apartment complex, brand-new, starting construction any time now, in the middle of Fairfield. There's two four-unit, or two four-story apartment buildings that are being considered on west Texas. There's another high-rise. The point is, is that we know this, but you don't know that. So I think we need to make sure that information gets out, because if you're in the valley and all you see is, man, they're going to pave over, I'd be PO'd, too, right? Because you don't know what else is going on. And conversely, and I will tell you this, I have, I met with several folks, several ranchers and growers. I said, "Did anybody meet with you?" And they went, "No." I said, "Well, I'm meeting with you, simply because I wanted to know, did anybody meet with you?" And like I said, it's, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. We should have been probably, I should have been more on top of this, but we heard you loud and clear. And what I would ask for is that we come back with a plan. There's people out here that will volunteer, and kind of like what Dwayne Crom said, is when we did Vision 2020. I remember that, I worked for the city back then. And it took an awful long time, where you flesh out everything, and then when the council sees it, then it would be new to us, because we don't want to be involved in the discussions. We want everybody to figure it out, then it comes to us, and instead of people yelling, then the place is full with, yeah, we worked on that aspect and that aspect. We are under no time element. We're under no time element, right? I mean, the valley is the same today, it could be the same a year from now, it could be the same two years or four years from now. So, I mean, we're going to have to work for it, because the law requires and general plans and blah, blah, blah. But what I'm saying is, and what you, I'm saying what you told us is, settle down, take a breath, nothing's going to change, talk to us, and now I think we, as a council, need to facilitate with staff, because you heard me earlier say, "It's easy for us to promise the pickleball court or tennis courts, and we look at the city manager, and he looks at staff, and staff is like this," because it is a huge, huge undertaking, all right? Give us time, we'll make it right. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Bertotti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for hanging in there with us this evening. Really appreciate all of your insights. You know, Sassoon Valley is more of a destination than downtown Fairfield, so as of right now, and has been for a long time. So we would have to be not too bright to mess with that. I will not support messing with that, because the Sassoon Valley plan is getting it right. What we need to be doing is modeling what we're doing in certain areas in the city behind that plan. That plan is working. So I am so glad that we are unanimous in that part of the decision. What concerns me greatly are the misconceptions, the miscommunications, and the lack of transparency in this process. That concerns me greatly. We can all agree to disagree, but we all have to have a shot in the conversation and have a reasonable time to consider our options. And it's sounding to me like that process, for whatever reason, has not worked. That's a big problem. So we're here after however many months we've been working on this process with misinformation at the end of the day. So now what do we have to do? We have to go back to the drawing board. That's inefficiency. That makes no sense. I mean, I know that we're not in a hurry, but we got to do better. Like, we can't, we can't make that mistake again. I personally would like to see this city council, to the extent required by law, get ahead of this, because somebody in the meeting tonight, a few people asked rightfully, "Who decided this? Where are the decision-makers?" You're looking at them. Where are the decision-makers? At the end of the day, we're going to make this decision. So why would we not be a part of the process? Does that make sense? We need to be a part of the process. We need to listen to the robust and wide-open discussions that need to happen in this process. It's too important not to. And I know that was a double negative, Batson, but just, I'm sorry. No, listen, seriously. So I think that we should, I think that, I want to challenge this council to step up to the plate and lead in this effort, to the extent that we can by law, you know? We need to be engaged, not at the last meeting on the end of the plan. No, we want to hear from you upfront. Somebody said we need to collaborate. Let's do that. That makes sense. You know, we don't want to make decisions in a vacuum. So, Mr. City Manager, you might be able, and like the Vice Mayor said, like Catherine said as well, we need to have a fair representation of the community at these meetings. We all need to get together, because we all got to live here, together. And I can get, I can bet you one thing, when other people in this community begin to hear, we need to- When other people in this community begin to hear, "We need to, you know, fix downtown. We need to develop the abandoned, dilapidated properties," and, you know what? I think you're going to hear some resonating ears there. I'm sure that they would want that too. But we all need to get together. So we've had special meetings on homelessness. We have had special meetings on cannabis, for goodness sake. You know, I think that this, that this issue, that this work deserves a special meeting where we can hear from all of you, all of us together over in the community center, someplace that will accommodate more than this room will, and let's hash it out. Let's get down to it. You know, the consultants, I don't know what to say about that process, other than that. It apparently hasn't worked out so well. So, you know, that's not a criticism. Bottom line, let's do better. So how can we do better? Continuing to do the same thing over and over again? No. Let's do something different. So if we can have, Mr. City Manager, in this process, is that, or Mr. City Attorney, is that even feasible for this city council to face the music? Let, like, let's go to a venue where we can hear from you and you can hear from us and you can talk to your neighbors and you can, you know, we can have a collaborative session just getting down to the nuts and bolts of what we're talking about. Is that even possible from a legal perspective?
So it is possible. You can call a study session. It is within the prerogative of the council to set whatever meetings they feel are necessary. Um, I would remind the council that they need to meet together as a body. You can't start going individually to meetings and start prejudging issues with the general plan. But you definitely have the right to hold study sessions. Um, you would need to get together and decide when to call them and coordinate with staff on when and where you're going to do them. Um, and you can sit there and listen. Um, but of course, remember, and I think Councilmember Tim mentioned this, that you cannot prejudge the issue. You know, you can't be involved in the decision-making every way, but you can sit and listen. Um, and then eventually staff will come back or the consultant, whoever you decide to put the plan together, will put it together and you'll make the final decision at that point. Uh, but if you do it, um, it needs to be done because of the Brown Act. It needs to be done together and it needs to be in study sessions with a, with a full quorum.
Thank you for that clarification. So with that said, I think that this discussion warrants some study sessions that are well-advertised, that are on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter and, you know, where they should be, um, where we will be able to announce them way ahead of time. But I think that we, I, I'm hoping that my colleagues agree that we need to get ahead of this. We, we, the leadership here needs to, after what we've seen tonight, we need to be the ones you're talking to. So that's my proposal. Again, thank you, um, and thank you, Susun Valley, and for all of the visioning and work that you've done. My 22-year-old daughter and her girlfriends, um, you know, they're 20, they're over 21, so they can have wine and so, they love it out there. The hipster, young, 22-year-olds go hang out at Mankis Corner. She sings at one of the, so like someone said, "Let's have a place where our kids actually want to be in Fairfield." That's, as a mom, that warms my heart, for her to be inviting her friends up from the Bay Area saying, "Let's go hang out, you know, at this winery, oh my, this, this steakhouse, whatever." So great job. Um, we appreciate what you have done and we look forward to what you plan on doing in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I share the same sentiments with my colleagues with regards to, you know, needing to slow the roll and coming up with another alternative. And for me, I'll share, you know, my parents, um, immigrants to this country and they, you know, grew up on those lands out there, grew up picking fruit. And I, my fondest memories of driving out there are me pointing at a tree and my mom telling me what was grown on it just by looking at the leaf. So I have a deep appreciation for the valley. I feel honored to be sitting at this dais, knowing that my grandparents and my parents and my aunts and uncles all tilled that land. Um, and so we need to take the time to do it right because it does matter. And so I'm here speaking also on behalf of the constituents that I represent in District Five. And so for me, that is inner-city Fairfield and it's called many different things today. Understandably so, but at the same time, there's so much opportunity in that area. And so, yeah, a lot of the focus and rightly so, should go to that specific area and town, for sure. Um, and also regarding incorporating other stakeholders, absolutely. Not just the individuals here, but other parts in Fairfield, as has been mentioned, including the individuals in our community who are not normally, they're the hardest to reach out to. So I asked the question with regard to the survey. I know that it was in Spanish and Tagalog, you know, how many of those surveys we returned back in those languages? Because I know that those two communities are one of the hardest to outreach to. So I think slowing the roll also allows us to spend more time and effort into gathering information from them. I know the effort was made. I know there was an event, La Favorita. Um, there was a table, um, at Grande Circle this past weekend, but I think that more can be done, absolutely. And I've, and I've tried to assist with those efforts because I'm a part of that community and I try my best to kind of spread the word and it's hard. But they're an important voice to be a part of this, of this, of this survey, of this plan, that they're, they live here and they're going to be, and their kids live here and I, you know, they're in our neighborhoods and they're our essential workers and, um, they, there, a lot of them are the backbone of this, of this community. So, yes, um, slow the roll. Let's look at another alternative and let's, you know, make sure we incorporate as many voices as possible in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Tannus, please.
I wrote this down before we started.
Number four.
Um, yeah, I, I share the sentiments of my colleagues. I mean, I'll go, I'll go the family route too. We come over in 1852. Um, so I want to not repeat what my colleagues said. Um, and I'm not, I'm not interest, well, I don't, I don't think that everything should come to us. I think that we're about to give clear direction to this, to the consultant. Um, we, you know, I think we should be more involved, more of a voice, but the consultant has put in many, many hours and I think that, um, we're going to, I'm assuming, give them different direction. Um, what does a valley group look like? What does a Susun Valley group look like? Who's going to get involved? You know, maybe we'll ask the consultant, how, what's that going to look like? How many people, how many meetings, um, you know, to get your input? Um, what does a sign-up sheet, where are, are there sign-up sheets or can we get a sign-up sheet to, uh, to get as many people involved from the valley as we can? Um, you know, I can, I can go into, to my comments or my concerns. My district is two, so I represent the downtown, downtown Fairfield. There are a lot of good restaurants there now. Um, so some of the, some of the plans that I've seen down there I want to talk about, but there's no one here from the, from the, from our inner cities today. There's no one talking about the inner cities. So that's not the subject matter that I would talk about right now, except Mr. Cornelius. And, uh, so I would like to kind of have a different conversation with the, with the consultant and it sounds like we all want to kind of go a different direction, maybe steer the boat. Uh, but I don't know about all seven of us having a special meeting and getting involved. I think that we've hired these consultants for a reason and, uh, that would be, that would be my input. Thank you.
Thank you. And I should, I'll summarize very quickly. I think your being here tonight was so critically important and it's unfortunate that we weren't ahead of the curve realizing what was happening and could have made some changes early on. So your being here tonight, and although I feel guilty about restricting you to two minutes, you did it pretty darn well, so thank you very much. We chose Fairfield 56 years ago. Our children were raised here. They were, they did all the things you talked about out in the valley. And we have a great affinity for this particular place. And I often get questions about, "Why are you staying in Fairfield?" And I say, "Well, it's a little difficult to explain. It's like love." There are all sorts of machinations, but the fundamental reason, of course, was this is a good place to live and to preserve and protect those elements that are so critically important for future generations, including, and this is a big one for me, including the Heart of Fairfield Plan. That's going to make a significant difference for future generations. And transit-oriented housing is really very, very important, but it has to be realistic housing and it has to be realistic transportation, too. I think we're very fortunate that we've all come together from a variety of backgrounds and we realize that what needs to happen must be a reflection of the people who live here. And the valley, for me, is sacrosanct. It really is. And I'm very privileged to have spent some time with Chuck Wagner from Camas. And he understood from the very beginning the importance of something like the Levin Kids. And that's a significant contribution that he's going to be making. And the soil, you're not going to replicate this soil, no matter where you go. And you can add all the fertilizer you want, but if we do it well, Fairfield can continue on its course, a trajectory that is going to make things good for not just us and our, those who follow us, but for the entire surrounding area. So there used to be a separation between Susun Valley and the city of Fairfield, but your being here tonight, you brought us all together. So I think we'll, we will be able to, working very closely with staff and consultants, we'll be able to bring together a plan that meets the needs of all of us. So thank you very much. There is no other business before this body.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I, I think we've gotten some direction. I've got pages of notes. I know David's over here taking lots of notes. Others are taking notes. So unless there's some additional questions on direction that we've received here, um, I, I would look to our, our planning staff and David. Do we have enough now to know how to move forward?
Yeah, we'll come back. This is part of the process, by the way. Um, I've been involved in several, uh, general plan updates as well. And this is part of the process. This is how it happens. This is healthy. I know some feel like, "Boy, you're making decisions." No, we're not. This is actually how we find out. There was a very robust, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, where lots of information was, 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 was had there as well. This is the way it's supposed to work because this is the process. This is how we find out. So this has been great. We've got tons of notes. It's been good.
Councilman Bertoni, please.
Mr. Mayor, so how would we entertain the prospect of study sessions involving the city council as, as I brought up a little earlier? Is, is that an agenda item for a regular city council meeting?
Yeah, we, we simply, you, you direct that you want us to schedule some study sessions on this and we can certainly do that.
Okay.
You bet. There's, there's been other, if, if you take a look at the, in your packet, there's a thing there that talks about the process and open meetings and things like that. We can add as many study sessions to that as, as you'd like and are happy to do that.
Okay, well, I would, I would like to add, I mean, I would like to make that request. I don't know what the timing would be or, I mean, we can talk about logistics, but I would like to formally make that request.
That's, that's one of the notes that I have here.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Are there any other, are there any other comments, anyone? Thank you very much. We are adjourned until our next gathering and you can go home with a smile on your face tonight. Good night.